A bit of a shave. Yeah, well, you know, practice makes perfect. I don't want to have to work on it.
I'll do it.
I'm well.
Oh, was he supposed to be?
He was supposed to say.
It's amazing that they have this room.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, he's on.
I thought you said.
So, you know.
Mm-hmm.
I'm timed up there.
Let's do it.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. It is June the thirteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-four. This is our regular monthly council meeting. And for those of you who have taken an interest, I greatly appreciate it. My absence, I think, uh, I'm sure it's gone unnoticed, but anyway, these guys up here have taken care of business, which is very, very important. I'm very glad to be back and hopefully I'm, I'm here for, for the get-go. So, if you would, uh, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We don't want the mayor to miss his seat. We don't want the mayor to miss his seat.
This evening, we have for our invocation, Pastor David Bailey. Pastor, if you'd step forward and do our invocation for us, we'd appreciate it.
Good to see you, David.
Right over here, if you would. There's a microphone.
Let's pray. Lord, we come to you today as citizens, concerned citizens, but Lord, as we see above our town seal, we see in Latin, it says that love conquers all. Lord, I do pray that love would permeate everything that's discussed tonight. Lord, I pray for wisdom for our elected officials. I pray for, um, citizens to express things competently and kindly. And Lord, thank you that you allow us the privilege of self-governance. You allow us the privilege of being able to work together to find solutions. Lord, I do thank you for Stokesdale. I thank you for what this town has meant to me for many years. And Lord, I pray that you would let this town move forward in ways that build up community and, uh, actually share love with one another. Thank you, Lord, for giving wisdom to leadership, wisdom to our citizens. And Lord, may tonight's proceedings give honor to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thanks, David.
Thank you, Pastor. Uh, Mr. Foy has graciously agreed to conduct the remainder of the meeting. I greatly appreciate that. Uh, should be much better versed in our, uh, July meeting.
Mr. Foy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, next up on the agenda is to review and adopt the agenda. Uh, gentlemen, do you have any changes to the agenda? Additions, excuse me?
Mr. Foy, I have an addition that I want to make.
Okay.
Uh, it's in a connection with the request from Bill Greco with Land Solutions. Uh, he has made a request to the Stokesdale Town Council to review a administrative decision and a, uh, a, uh, possible conflictor in our ordinance. Uh, I would cite the June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four email he sent to, uh, Town Council at the town of Stokesdale.
Okay.
So, uh, I want to make that request.
So, uh, in the spirit of, uh, Mr. Greco not being here all night, Tim, are you comfortable hearing this between item eleven and twelve?
I think so. I don't have any real, uh, preference either way, just long as we get it done.
We'll call that addition eleven point five. Also, the town has received a request, uh, from the applicant and property owner, uh, in regard to tonight's rezoning case to continue the case. Uh, so that would require a vote of cancel. Certainly, uh, as one council member, I would extend that, uh, one-time courtesy. So I'm going to make a motion at the, at the request of the applicant and property owner, uh, to continue rezoning case two four hyphen zero four hyphen P L B D hyphen zero zero seven six, located at seventy-eight hundred Eversfield Road until Thursday, July eleventh, at Stokesdale Town Hall at seven P M. to be heard during the town of Stokesdale's July regularly scheduled council meeting.
I'll second.
Mr. Foy, Mr. Winfrey, are we, are we proceeding properly here voting on an item before we set the agenda?
Um, well, I, I took this to be an amendment to the agenda, um, I guess.
Yeah, I think Mr. Foy is actually asking us to vote on ex, on extending this public hearing to a later date at the request of the applicant, but shouldn't we put it on the agenda and then address it?
Well, I think, I interpret it as he's removing it from this agenda to put it on a later agenda. So, so I, I guess I would view it as a, as an amendment to the agenda.
I, I just wanted to make sure it didn't have to be re-advertised, that we're proceeding properly.
No, because it's advertised for tonight, as long as we announce tonight when the new hearing is, then we don't have to re-advertize it. Presumably, anybody who wants to attend or view it is here. And so by announcing it in this meeting, then we can continue to a later meeting.
Yeah, with, with respect to all parties, this is just not the way we've done the exact same thing in the past. Okay.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second.
Yep.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, I'll call question. Jim?
Aye.
I'm aye. Jimmy?
Aha.
And Tim?
Aye.
And Mike?
Aye.
All right. Are there any further changes or additions to the agenda? Seeing that there are none, I'll move the adopt the agenda with those two changes. Uh, call question. Jim?
Aye.
I'm aye. And Jimmy?
Aha.
And Tim?
Aye.
Mayor Crawford?
Aye.
All right, passes. Next up, the presentation of Eagle Scout Project. I would like to introduce Mr. Jackson Mesersmith. Welcome, Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Stokesdale Town Council. My name is Jackson Mesersmith. I'm a life scout from Troop Six Hundred, working towards my Eagle rank. I want to thank you for allowing me to present my Eagle project idea today. I'm here today to share an exciting idea, uh, that will truly enhance, I hope, uh, Stokesdale Town Park while contributing positively to our local ecosystem. The idea, the idea that I want to share with you today involves the construction and installation of bee habitats for solitary pollinators, such as mason bees and leaf cutter bees. As many of you may know, pollinators play a vital role in the reproduction of flowering plants. They help promote the growth and diversity of wildflowers and native plants, thus enriching the biodiversity of our environment. I propose to install bee habitats in our parks specifically for solitary pollinators, like mason bees and leaf cutter bees. These habitats will consist of specif, specific, mm, specific, mm, I'm sorry. Specific, but, mm.
That's okay. I understand. We're, we're fine. Yeah.
Um, specifically designed bee houses that in, include of, inclusion of certain plant species, such as cone flowers, lavender, goldenrod, and bee bomb flowers. By providing suitable habitats and foraging resources, we can encourage these bees to thrive within our park, benefiting both the ecosystem and our community. Fun, funding for this project will come from generous donations collected through fundraising efforts. Additionally, my fellow scouts from Troop Six Hundred will lend their experiences and expertise and assistance in constructing these bee habitats, ensuring the project is both feasible and sustainable. These bees' presence can also attract other pollinators, such as ladybugs, lacewings, butterflies, and even hummingbirds, furthering, and had, further enhancing biodiversity and creating more vibrant park experience for visitors. These bee habitats in our park will, sorry, these bee habitats in our park will be tailored for solitary pollinators. These habitats will mimic these natural nesting sites to ensure the comfort and safety of these bees. To ensure that no unwanted, to ensure that no unwanted insects will house themselves in these habitats, I will drill different sized holes to fit the size of the solitary bees so that they are the only ones that will be sheltered in these houses. The strategic placement of these habitats will take into account factors such as sunlight exposure, proximity to foraging areas, and minimizing disturb, disturbances to park visitors. So, uh, the, uh, I built, I want to build these houses for these bees specifically. Uh, these, this is the mason bee and the leaf cutter bee. They are known for their gentle and non-aggressive nature towards humans. And they, um, are also one of the best pollinators within the bee group. They are excellent pollinators and greatly, I believe, greatly benefit our park's ecosystem. So, the installation of solitary bee habitats in Stokesdale Park holds great promise for supporting and protecting our local ecosystems. And with your approval, I am eager to move forward with this project and make positive impact on our community. Thank you.
Jackson, thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Cancelled. Gentlemen, do y'all have any questions for Jackson?
I, I do have a question. Um, we recently approved a Girl Scout. Um, I believe it's some sort of pollinator, um, area as well on the far side of the, the park. And I believe she constructed it recently, is my understanding. Would this conflict with that or would need to be maybe on a different location?
I, I do not think it will conflict with that at all. In fact, I think that the bees would actually make a good use of that pollinator garden. I think they could both work hand in hand to achieve, uh, the goal that I'm trying to reach in benefiting our ecosystem here, Stokesdale Town Park.
Do the, do these, um, uh, do these bees produce honey?
These bees do not produce any honey. They just pollinate any flowers.
Okay. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding is once these guys are gone from this earth, we all will be shortly there to follow. So, they're very important to our, our, just our staying alive.
Yes.
I like the idea. Uh, I think placement is important.
It is. Is it? From my perspective, it'd be, it'd be an honor to work with you to, to move this forward. Uh, of course, you know, I, I think it's reasonable to have concerns, uh, from a public safety standpoint, to have, you know, a congregation of bees in a place where, uh, you know, fo, folks may walk by or travel by. So it would, I would be honored to work with you to find a, a location that is reasonable, uh, to address that concern.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Counsel?
Well, gentlemen, do we need a motion to continue with this or just, uh, you know, move forward with, working with Jackson? Couple of us contact him and, what do you think, Jimmy?
I mean, he could put a plan together. I'm all for the bees, you know. I, I leave dandelions growing on acres of land.
Yeah.
For bees and actually in the yard where people don't like, you know, they like to spray them. And I like spraying stuff, so I, you know, I like bees. You know, we, we can do this. And, I mean, if we end up having a problem, you know, as far as some people getting stung or something, we may have to remove it. I hope it wouldn't happen, but I'm, I'm willing to give it a shot to see because what, you're right, we need some bees. You don't, it, it used to be when you go out in the fields, it'd be bees everywhere. Now, I was out mowing today, just, I mowed strips and leaf strips. And, uh, I mean, I mowed some strips and didn't even see a bee. It used to be you'd be, be, you know, flying around you and stuff, so I, I think it's a worthy project. Just, just keep in mind, if we did have a problem, we may have to remove them. And I don't think we will, but just, I wouldn't want you to be upset if something, you know, came up. Or we may have to move them to another location or something, you know. Maybe we can get it right to start with, but I think it's a worthwhile project.
I do too.
I'll do my best to make sure that that will not happen.
I'm sure you will. I'm sure you will, you know.
So, if the project's going to be placed on town's premises, probably appropriate for the council to approve that and perhaps defer the exact location to, to staff to figure out exactly the location.
Well, with that, I, I would then make a motion, uh, to accept, uh, Mr. Jackson Mesersmith's proposal, uh, from Troop Six Hundred for his Eagle Scout project, uh, for the bee pollinization area. Uh, and to, to work, the town council to work with Jason, uh, Jackson, excuse me, sir, uh, to move that forward, and we will, uh, work to find a good location with that.
I'll second.
Okay.
Just a bit of discussion. Neither one of those bees listed are aggressive bees. And they only usually bite when they're handled.
Okay.
So, just.
Good.
Just for, um, information.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll be aye.
Okay, and any further discussion before call question?
I'm good.
All right. Jim's aye. I'm also aye. Jimmy?
Aha.
And Tim?
Aye.
Mike?
And I am aye.
All right. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you for being here, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Jackson.
Thanks, Jackson.
Just need to maybe contact, um, the clerk, Robbie, and maybe we'll set up a day that we can meet one afternoon or something and walk the park and see where we could put it.
Great job.
Kind of, kind of go out, go out yourself and, and see what you think, and then, then present it. Let's, let's let him, let's turn him loose and, you know, then, then, you know, we just have to file approval, but, but you, you do, yeah, you, you do your thing. It's, it's, it's your, your, your project.
Good. All right. That brings us to item number four. Review and adopt the following minutes. Uh, we have one set of minutes in our packet. Uh, the minutes are dated December twentieth, twenty eighteen, uh, from a special call town council meeting. Robbie, just a brief explanation on, you know, these, these minutes have a little age on them.
Understood, yeah.
They got some gray hairs.
They do. They do. They're before my time here. Um, so, uh, these minutes were found recently. Uh, you all had us, uh, working on an inventory of closed session minutes. Well, one of the best ways to determine if these closed sessions actually happen were to go through and, and look at the open session minutes to make sure that a closed session occurred. Uh, in doing that, uh, we found that a closed session was referenced, uh, in a open session meeting that there was no minutes typed for. So, Ms. Martin found that and took it upon herself to type these minutes and, uh, with the notes that were provided and the audio that was left, and, and, uh, that's what's being presented to you.
Lord, none of us were here. Wait a minute.
Understood.
Tim was here.
Tim was here though, wasn't he?
Here we go.
I, if I may add to that, uh, I discussed, I, uh, discussed this with Ms. Martin. I was able to go home and get some, uh, attorney-client privileged information and have enlightened her about what transpired. It was really no big deal. Um, she has written a set of closed session minutes, also based on notes and what I provided her with. So, I've, I've, I was in that meeting. My memory fades, but I'm comfortable voting for this, uh, as it's presented.
All right. Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Being that, um, being that Tim has, has read that and he vouches for it, and I know the staff did as good a job as they could. Even though I was not there, I will vote for that, and I'll second the motion.
All right. We, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion, gentlemen? All right, I call question. Jim?
Aye.
I'm aye. Jimmy?
Aha.
And Tim?
Aye.
And Mr. Crawford?
And I am aye.
All right. The motion passes five to zero. Next item on the agenda is the public safety reports. Uh, welcome, Todd.
Good evening, council of citizens. So our run report, uh, for the fire district during the month of May, actually, we finally looked for that month that we slowed down a little bit and, and, uh, couldn't have come at a better time. But, uh, we had a total of seventy-four runs for the month. Forty-three were medical, eight were fire-related, and twenty-three were of the other variety of calls. Um, so, we would like to see that more often, but it, it is what it is with growth. The tip for the month is, is obviously we're in that, that time of year where everybody likes to grill. And if y'all know, remember, a lot of times during the, uh, the winter months, I talk about folks who use wood stoves and taking out your ashes and different things like that. So a lot of the same, uh, practices should apply when you're using a charcoal grill. And I like to hit on that this time of the year, um, because it kind of goes in line with the, the winter stuff. Generator, you know, you want to always keep it outside. You always want to make sure your grills are outside as well, um, because you can have the same CO problem with a grill in a garage with the door shut or something like that, that you can, excuse me, have with a, a generator running. Always try to keep at least three feet around them. Uh, remember, you're dealing with heat. And one of the main reasons are so many people have them on decks and there's a lot of vinyl siding and all. Good opportunity to melt it. You know, you don't think about it. You walk inside, you forget that you've got the grill lid or something, especially a gas grill. Um, speaking of a gas grill, if you're using a gas grill, always light it with the lid open. And I know that seems like that would be something that was just natural to do, but it doesn't always happen. And one of the things that people forget is if you're like me, you get aggravated when it doesn't light the first time, you know. Uh, you shut the lid and say, I'll come back to it in a minute, and in your aggravation, you forget to cut the gas off. Um, so when you're lighting it, always make sure that you leave that, that lid open. If it doesn't light and you're going to walk away from it for a couple of minutes, still leave that grill lid open because I'll promise you, they will pop up on you, uh, really quick. Um, if you're using charcoal, again, treat it like you do coals from a fireplace or from a wood stove. Remember those ashes and those embers in there, especially hard pieces, can, uh, smolder for days. Um, and we recommend that you put it in some type of metal bucket with a lid on it. You don't want to leave it sitting on a wooden deck. You want to get it away from your house. After a few days, if you're going to dump them, put them in the woods somewhere, you know, be as safe as you can. Never hurts to take some water out there after you do it and put on it because you never, you never know what may happen. So, we just don't want to have to come to anybody's house. We want everybody to enjoy their, their outdoor time, their grilling and everything, and be safe.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the report from the Guilford County Sheriff's Off, Office. And Robbie, I believe you have that, and it's in our packets as well.
Okay, so this is, uh, this is the Guilford County Sheriff's report from Sergeant Ryan Seals. Uh, for the month of May, the sheriff's office responded to one hundred and seventy-nine calls in the Stokesdale Town Limits, resulting in ten reports. Of note, on five twelve, deputies responded to a homicide at seven eight seven six Eversfield Road, where they found thirty-eight-year-old Troy Scott Service deceased from multiple gunshot wounds. On five thirteen, John Austin Kane, eighteen, was arrested and charged with first-degree murder in relation to the death of Service. The investigation involved multiple divisions of the sheriff's office and the Rockingham County Sheriff's Office. News release attached. On five fourteen, deputies responded to an aggravated assault call at the eighteen-hundred block of Ellisboro Road, in which a victim reported a road rage-related incident, in which another driver fired multiple rounds from a handgun. No injuries were reported, nor was any property damage. The offender was identified and warrants are still pending service on the individual involved. And the calls by type were three disturbance, twenty-nine alarm, one alcohol, six domestic, three weapons, one warrant, two fraud, one sex crime, three accident, eighty-one other, sixteen suspicious, one vandalism, one theft, five trespassing, and twenty-six traffic. And, uh, if you'd like, I'll, I'll go ahead and read this, uh, news release by Sheriff Rogers of the Guilford County Sheriff's Office. Uh, this is regarding, um, the incident that occurred on Eversfield Road, and this is dated May the fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Sheriff Danny H. Rogers reports that on May twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at five oh four P M, the Guilford County Sheriff's Office responded to a homicide at seven eight seven six Eversfield Road, Stokesdale, North Carolina, two seven three five seven. Upon arrival, deputies located thirty-eight-year-old Troy Scott Service suffering from multiple gunshot wounds. Guilford County EMS and fire personnel responded to the scene and subsequently pronounced Mr. Service deceased. This incidence appears to be isolated, and there was no threat to the community. On May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, detectives with the Guilford County Sheriff's Office and Rockingham County Sheriff's Office arrested eighteen-year-old John Austin Kane at a residence in Rockingham County. Kane was transported to the Guilford County Detention Center in Greensboro, where he was charged with first-degree murder. He is currently being held without a bond until his first court appearance on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. This investigation is ongoing, and no further information will be released at this time. Anyone with information regarding the investigation should contact Detective J. Robertson at three three six six four one five nine six nine, or Guilford County Crime Stoppers at three three six three seven three one thousand. For media inquiries, please contact the Public Information Officer, Bria Evans, at three three six six four one two seven five two.
Thank you, Robbie.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly, my condolences, condolences to Mr. Service's family. Uh, next up on the agenda is our administrative reports. Uh, town clerk, Mr. Robbie Wagner.
Yeah, so, um, I have placed these administrative reports in your packet, so I'll, uh, I'll go over them quickly, the highlights. And if you have any questions, just feel free to chime in. But, uh, as for the water system report, we had five meters, um, installed. We had thirty-four water meters in stock, seven applications for transfer of service and water meters in, thirty water meters and applications on hold for builders, nine work orders, fifty-eight eight-one-ones, eight hundred and seventeen water bills mailed out, and thirty-five park rentals. Uh, the two thousand twenty-three edition of the Annual Consumer Confidence Report for the town of Stokesdale has been uploaded to the town of Stokesdale's website. Notification and access instructions were printed on the back of all water bills in May. An update on the water line extension project on Coldwater Road is that it's advancing to the preliminary design phase, uh, which encompasses geotechnical investigations and environmental assessments. And, uh, Hazen and Sawyer plan to initiate the bid phase in the third quarter of twenty twenty-four, which is next month, somewhere between July and September. Um, and that ensures that the funds are properly allocated by the deadline, since we are using ARPA money. On Ellisboro Road, following the May town council meeting, I did reach out to co, to Kinnonley Engineering, uh, with a list of comments regarding the areas of the bid documents that they needed, uh, revised or at least asked for recommendations on, uh, since distributed that to them. And, uh, I just got an email from Mr. Kinnonley late yesterday that, uh, that the bid is finalized. He wants to make sure that I'm satisfied with where the federal uniform guidance, uh, requirements are in there. And, um, and then it's ready to go to the list of ven, uh, vendors that we provided some months ago.
Yeah, it's been a minute.
Yep. And, um, of note, the three-year lead and copper report is due July first, and that's something that Ms. Hunsucker's working on. And then, of course, our lead service line inventory is due October sixteenth. And Hazen and Sawyer has been working with Ms. Hunsucker on that, uh, basically since we signed a contract with them. Um, for the administrative report, a couple items of note is that, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Foy and I, uh, represented the town at the annual pine needle operating company coordination with emergency responders and public officials. It was a good meeting. First time I'd ever been there. Also, uh, I'd like to mention that, uh, on June the eleventh, myself and, and Mr. Winfrey, uh, Mason Winfrey, uh, met with representatives of Guilford County's, uh, Information Technology Department to receive training on how to access and utilize the web portal for legal advertisements on the Guilford County website. They have some technical issues, but I think we'll be good to go by the July first, uh, start date. So, um, so that's good. And then on June the twenty-fourth, uh, I'll attend the next Greensboro Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization Technical Coordinating Committee meeting at two o'clock P M., and that's on Monday, June the twenty-fourth.
Great job, Robbie. Thank you.
And one thing I would like to add, I'm sorry, I just remembered I had a sticky note here. Um, so, uh, I'll, I'll let, um, Mr. Jones speak more to this. So I'll I'll let Mr. Jones speak more to this. But we were able to secure a framed copy of some of the founding documents here. We've got a framed copy of the Declaration of Independence and a framed copy of the United States Constitution in the building here, and Mr. Jones would like to to give more information on that. I'll be glad to give him the microphone.
Well, these are sitting here behind us and just arrived in the town hall this week. Council previously voted to purchase and display copies of the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution. Time passes pretty quickly. I have been researching this. I've been in touch with organizations all across the country. What I want to see are poster-sized displays, and I want to be sure that whatever we put up is printed in the United States. If all, if at all possible, I don't want to see printed in China on it, in this particular case. And so I went ahead and had these orders so we would have something to put up before this July fourth, to get us down down the road. This is not where this ends at for me. I had become aware that an organization purchased these founding documents. I don't know how big they are, but I'm told they're pretty nice for Rockingham County to install in their governmental building. And I have a contact pursuing contact information for that organization. So I hope to be able to report back soon what the parameters are. And it's my belief we might be able to get those purchased for us and installed for free because that's what this organization does. So with that said, that's the update on that. But when we're done with them in this room, I hope they'll go up in the mayor's office or wherever. We have multiple offices in this building. I'd be happy to have have them up in each office. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the lead on that, Tim.
And I've got one more item. I'm sorry, these were two things that I've added since then, and they're on sticky notes. They get stuck to backs of pages. That other item being that we've gotten a few calls from residents regarding their their trash bill and recycling bill from GFL Environmental, and just want to try to alleviate some of those concerns. So the contract that we have with GFL started back in two thousand and twenty-two, I believe. And during that time, we were able to get them to agree to never raise the price more than five percent. Now, they take it all the way to five percent every July. So every July, their 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 contract says that they will raise the rate five percent, no more. Wish for less, but but they're going to do it. Now, now folks will will say that it it just happened not long ago, and there was some change in management at the Greensboro office. And so the rate increase that was supposed to occur on July of twenty twenty-three ended up not occurring until September of twenty-three. So the rate that was increased in September of twenty-three was supposed to be in July. So this July, they're not waiting till September. They're doing it in July. So the good news is customers got it at a discounted rate from July to September.
Twenty-three.
Is it, isn't it tied to the upper index or something?
It is. It's tied.
Was it over five percent this year?
It was.
It was seven percent, I think, if not more.
For the second year in a row, the inflation from the Consumer Price Index regarding, you know, waste disposal was over seven percent. But because Jimmy negotiated the five percent cap in the contract, you know, our our citizens are only, they can't do more than five percent. So there, it is tied to the Consumer Price Index. It's not just an arbitrarily annual five percent increase. For example, next year, if the Consumer Price Index only showed two percent, I don't think it will, but all it would be would be two percent or so.
And I'll extend an attaboy to Mr. Lander for chipping in and getting that done at the time.
Absolutely. All right, if that's all you have for the administrative report, Robbie, we'll move on. Do you have any planning board update?
I do. So I do have a planning board report. So a public hearing will be held during the next regular Town of Stokesdale Planning Board meeting. This meeting will be held inside the Stokesdale Town Hall Council Chambers, located right here at eighty-three twenty-five Angel Pardee Road, on Thursday, June the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, at seven o'clock PM. And this is a public hearing to consider the adoption of the proposed thoroughfare and collector street plan as prepared and adopted by the Greensboro Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, and subsequently amending the Town of Stokesdale's future land use plan. It's important to realize that this is a a public hearing that's that's being had because if approved by the town council, it would change the future land use plan, which is an update to the development ordinance. Planning Board doesn't have the final say on this, but they're making a recommendation to the town council. So and then, then with that being said, then you all could certainly hear this same public hearing on July the eleventh at the July meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Robbie.
Do we have the updated maps already?
You do. I emailed them to you on Friday.
We do have them.
Yes, yep, yep.
Great.
And it's also a list of changes. They gave us a a map and then a list of changes between the last map and the current map. So in a table.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Robbie. Next up for administrative reports is the Property Committee, Mr. Riggsby.
This time I don't have anything.
All right, next up is the Town Park Improvement Committee, Mr. Chairman T. Stevenson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Quickly, an update on the nature trail. We did get an update from Andrew Neesele. They are making progress on the trail. They have completed the north end of the trail, which is actually in the wooded area here beside Town Hall between here and and Athens Drive, and anticipate the trail to be completed sometime by the end of July. We, he did forward some pictures to us of the young men and some chaperones working on the trail. They are properly clothed with protective gear there. So far, he has said that they have had twenty-three people to participate and have contributed a hundred and twenty hours into this project. They are going to make some additional improvements to the to the trail here, which will include just some finishing touches that will prohibit vehicular traffic from going on the trail, such as ATVs, et cetera, to to do that. I did speak with Chief Golden here just a few minutes ago, and we will be working with the the Fire Department for emergency access and some consistencies there with that. So Andrew apologized. He's not able to be here tonight for this meeting. They're out of town. But again, much appreciation to this group of young men for a very worthwhile project. With regard to our request for proposals for the lighting for the soccer fields, athletic fields, we did release a RFP on May the seventh. This particular RFP was only dealing with the electrical fixtures themselves and installation of the wiring and apparatus to go along with that. Unfortunately, the due date came and went. We did not receive any proposals from any of the contractors that were contacted or the open bids that we did publicize in the various newspapers in the area. We are at this time looking at and following up with some particular vendors that were suggested and who we had reached out individually to see why there was no response to our request with that, and we'll be following up on that. Probably we'll come forward here in another meeting and with another recommendation on how to proceed with that. A little disappointed that we didn't get any recommendations or any proposals there. That being said, the, we did receive a proposal from a contractor to install six light poles, sixty-five-foot wooden, I won't say light poles, there will be light poles, but they're wooden poles. Along with the necessary mounting hardware, the two arms on each pole. And unfortunately, that proposal did not include any installation of any of the fixtures. And the the notes there is that that particular contractor is not interested in doing that. He's just wanting to provide the poles and the installation thereof. So we'll be working diligently to try to get something a little bit more firm with that. The, I'm pleased to report that the accessories for the playground and basketball and pickleball court have been received, and they did start installing those today. There are four benches, two trashcan pedestals, and two bike racks have been installed in front of the basketball and pickleball courts. They did not get through today. They had hoped to, but they did not. So they they have another job tomorrow, but will come out on Saturday and install two additional benches and a trashcan, as well as the rubber mats around the swings, the playground equipment. And that should be completed on Saturday. Mr. Wagner received some preliminary calls for adding two additional security cameras in the area of the basketball and pickleball courts. Again, this was only a partial proposal. It did not include electrical connections. So we are in the process now of of entertaining some additional information to be able to complete that project, and we'll be giving more information as as that is available to us on that. One other thing, we 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 still see parking in the area of the basketball and pickleball courts on both sides of the road there, the thoroughfare. So we are looking at what options may be available to us to provide additional real parking areas there, rather than just on the side of the road. And again, we'll have some additional information as that becomes available to us. But that is a concern, and part of the concern is that is a thoroughfare. And people getting in and out of vehicles on that thoroughfare could have doors knocked off, people being injured, et cetera, et cetera, with that. So we are trying to remedy that situation. No parking signs don't work. Yellow tape doesn't work. Barrels don't work. So maybe a paved area and some specific guidelines will be a little bit more effective. The next meeting of the Park Improvement Committee is scheduled for June the twentieth, which is next Thursday at five fifteen in this room. These are open to the public, and so anyone that would like to attend is certainly welcome to do so. Any questions? I know that was a lot of stuff.
Sure was. Thank you, T.
Anything?
Thank you, T.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, T. Let's see. Next up on the agenda is our financial reports. Our finance slash budget officer, Ms. Kimberly Thacker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, we'll go over this briefly. We'll start with the general fund. The total bank accounts for the general fund as of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and this includes all SEDARs, the money market, the operating account, and the ARPA account, is three million, four hundred, eighty-four thousand, two hundred, twenty-eight dollars and six cent. Our accounts payable for the month of May for Gary, our operator in charge, I'm sorry, operator responsible in charge, is nine hundred, ninety dollars and twenty-seven cent. The sales tax is two thousand, one hundred, sixty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. The Water Enterprise reimbursement shared overhead expense due to the general fund is sixteen thousand, three hundred, sixty-one dollars and seventy-four cent. The total interest for the month of May that the general fund received is nine thousand, fifteen dollars and ninety-eight cent. The interest year-to-date through May thirty-first is ninety thousand, five hundred, seventy-six dollars and thirty cent. Our state retirement for the town of Stokesdale for the month of May is one thousand, nine hundred, ten dollars and eighty-nine cent. For the year-to-date, the town of Stokesdale has contributed fourteen thousand, one hundred, five dollars and sixty cent for full-time staff. And if we can go to the Water Enterprise account. Our, again, these are through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Our total current assets, again, that include our SEDARs, our capital reserve fund, operating account, the North Carolina Management Trust Fund, and our regular savings account, that totals two million, five hundred, ninety-one thousand, forty-two dollars and seventy-eight cent. The accounts receivable for Water is, that includes the May building, building, billing, is twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred, eighty dollars and seventy-four cent. The sales tax receivable is six hundred, thirty-nine dollars and sixty six, sixty cents. And the capacity fees for the month of May is six thousand dollars. Our total year-to-date capacity fees collected is forty-eight thousand dollars. The interest for the month of May for the Water Enterprise account is four thousand, three hundred, ninety-two dollars and fifty, fifty-seven cent. Year-to-date total is forty-four thousand, four hundred, forty-four dollars and seventy-two cent. The total accounts payable for the month of May is seventeen thousand, three hundred, fifty-two dollars and one cent. This includes the water reimbursement, shared overhead expenses due back to the general fund, and this also includes the payroll due back to the general fund. And I think that is all for that. And that is all for the financials. If anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Kim. I've got one, just kind of a housekeeping question, but the water deposits that are refundable.
Yes.
Where do we keep those? Are they in the interest-bearing account?
Yes, they are.
Money market rate?
They are actually at zero point zero five percent.
Zero point zero five. Raking it in on there. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Kim, just one note maybe for for the next meeting. We've received six hundred thousand dollars from Guilford County for the water line extension part of the ARPA project.
That is correct.
And have we, have we paid out all that yet?
No.
So from a, from a liability standpoint, should should we recognize the difference in what we've paid out? Because it is, that money is restricted, right?
That is correct, and I have had it on my previous reports. I'm kind of remapping things on that to make sure, yeah, so, yes.
And it's fine. It's, we'll, we'll talk about it going forward. But I think we definitely don't want to count that as part of the equity from the operations side.
That's correct.
Okay, excellent. Any further questions for Kim? All right, that brings us to public comments from the floor. I have one gentleman that has filled out a card, but of course, anybody's welcome to speak. We have three minutes. Welcome, Mr. Randy Nguyen.
Counsel, thank you. A few years back, you had an item on the agenda wherein a proposed ABC store was to be located in the then vacant portion of the Dollar General Village Pizza Building across Blues Creek Road from Stokesdale Christian Church. At that meeting, I urged the town council strongly to reconsider that location since we host multiple AA or Alcoholics Anonymous meetings each week. I further stated this would be far too great a temptation for those striving to abstain from drinking alcohol. Fast forward to June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, where you yet again have proposed an ABC store within the town limits, or will be at some future point, I'm sure. Business Item eleven will be addressing that. Personally, I have no problem with an adult who's twenty-one or older drinking an occasional alcoholic beverage. I do have a problem when an ABC store is located close to a school where we influence our young people by our example. And if said store is located near church property, I have a problem. I'm sure God would have a problem with that as well. My proposition is if you must have an ABC store within Stokesdale Town Limits, make sure it's at least a quarter mile. My preference would be a thousand yards. Quarter mile's only four hundred and forty yards from any school or church property. I'm sure you're doing, you'll be doing whatever you decide, and I pray that you listen to the public's concerns. At the same time, if you, if you do disregard my proposals, I have a feeling you'll be filled, your your email accounts, your voicemails, and your social media accounts, as well as showing up at town council meetings from people who are agitated with. up at town council meetings from people who are agitated with said ABC store. Please take my words under serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. There's also a period of public comments at the end of the meeting, if you so feel inspired to speak then as well. Moving on on the agenda, we have a public hearing on the proposed Town of Stokesdale operating budget for the 2024-2025 fiscal year. So in this public hearing, I would suggest that we start off with our finance officer presenting the budget summary for next year. Then we'll open it up for any public comments regarding next year's budget or anything you would like to say, that I guess that involves money. We would welcome to hear from you. And at that point, the matter would, we would close the public hearing, the matter would rest with council, and actually, on item number 13 on the agenda is, would be a vote up or down for the proposed budget ordinance. So with that, I believe it would be appropriate to go ahead and open the public hearing. Once again, introduce Ms. Kim Thacker to present the budget summary for the FY25 budget. Ms. Thacker?
First, I would like to thank council, staff for chipping in this year and helping, supporting, and all the suggestions that were given this year for the budget. I'm very happy with our budget, proposed budget, excuse me, it's not been voted in yet, but I'm very happy with it. I think it's a great budget. We did have-
With no property tax.
Correct, with no property, that is correct. We did have two budget workshops this year. We have one April the 2nd and May the 7th, and those workshops did include council, staff, and these workshops were also open to the public to attend. I would like to begin with the general fund. Again, I'm going to do just a summary of our budget this year. So in our revenue, our total revenue that we are proposing this year is $912,197.48. This includes our local operating revenue of $343,920, our local non-operating revenue of $93,000, that's our interest for investment interest. The non-operating revenue, which includes the grants and intergovernmental transfers, is $475,277.48. The expenses, the total for the general fund we are proposing for the fiscal year 2425 Those expenses include the cultural and recreational, $16,500, economic and physical development, $31,500, general administrative is $166,895.45, legal and professional services, $50,500, payroll expenses, $314,136.47, public safety is $31,635, non-recurring expenses totals $475,277.48, and our contingency appropriations is $3,745.17. Also, the total reimbursement, and this is for a balanced budget, we have the shared overhead reimbursable expense from the Water Enterprise Fund that totals $177,992.09 that would be reimbursed from the Water Enterprise account back to the general fund, which then totals our budget for revenue at $912,197.48, and expenses total $912,197.48. On the water, okay, the summary, again, this is for proposed budget for fiscal year 2425, and our total revenue for this fiscal year that we are proposing is $5,232,454.97, which includes our local operating revenue, that's the town of Stokesdale from the water customers, $714,508.4, our local non-operating revenue, $40,000, that's our investment interest revenue. The non-operating revenue, which is the grants and intergovernmental transfers, is $4,477,946.93. Our expenses will total the same, $5,232,454.97. This includes the direct operational expenses of $526,515.95. Our capital projects, $4,527,946.93. And then the reimbursement to the general fund for shared overhead expenses total $177,992.09. Again, this with the revenue of $5,232,454.97, and expenses that total $5,232,454.97, we have a balanced budget.
Thank you, Kim. Now we'll open it up for public comments. Love to hear what you think about the budget, any suggestions you may have for either this fiscal year or going forward. So please feel free to speak.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you, Ms. Theria.
If I could come to a line, I'd appreciate it. Sure.
Kim does a fantastic job. We're very fortunate. Yeah, oh, no doubt. Yeah. Well, seeing that there are none, I guess going once, going twice, we will go ahead and close the public hearing, and the matter rests with council. Now, we do have our own agenda item to adopt the budget ordinance, and item number 13, so certainly it would be appropriate to discuss it then. I think it'd be appropriate to discuss it now. I believe I'm, personally, I'm going to wait to the agenda item, but, gentlemen?
I'll wait to the agenda item.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
And let's see. Next up on our agenda, we move to new business. Item number 11, the consideration of resolution requesting the Guilford County Board of Elections to add a referendum to the November 24 ballot for a vote to enable the location of an ABC store in the corporate boundaries of the town of Stokesdale. Mr. Rigsby.
Yes, this is my agenda item. As we were in our budget discussions, you know, we've always tried to maintain a no-tax stance. We're one of the only municipalities in North Carolina with no property taxes. We do that by offsetting with revenues and such as ABC, we're already receiving ABC money from other jurisdictions, other, like Jamestown. So, but our numbers have kind of dwindled here in the last couple of years, so I wanted to look at the possibility of getting our own store to, A, mainly to increase our revenue. It's, you know, I know it's a controversial issue. I don't believe it's going to necessarily increase a large influx of drinkers in town. I think you either drink or you don't, and I'm more focused on the economic development here piece, and it will bring a few jobs, from my understanding, into town. Not necessarily town residents, that would be up to the board and who applies, of course, but it is, it would provide the town some economic funding going forward that would help us to maintain a no-tax stance. So with that being said, I have a gentleman from the ABC Board that's going to make a presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, just to make a prepared statement, and then I can answer any questions. Honorable mayor, esteemed members of the town council, and citizens of Stokesdale, my name is Nigel Sullivan. I'm the general manager with Greensboro ABC Board. Extend my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to address you tonight on the matter of the potential opening of an ABC store in your town. It's an honor to engage in this crucial dialogue about a proposal that could significantly impact your community. Councilman Rigsby's initiative to explore avenues for increasing profit distributions from the Greensboro ABC Board, coupled with our discussions regarding the possibility of an ABC store in Stokesdale, underscores the importance of proactive economic planning and community development. As we delve into the discussion, it's essential to understand the framework within which we operate. The North Carolina ABC system operates on the principle of local option, providing communities like yours the flexibility to make decisions that best serve their interests. This process may not be entirely unfamiliar to Stokesdale, as the town went through this process in 2017, but did not have enough registered voters at the time. It's crucial to recognize that specific requirements outlined in General Statute 18B 600D that must be met to hold an ABC store election. To proceed with the opening of an ABC store in Stokesdale, you must meet three criteria. The town must have at least 1,000 registered voters, the county in which Stokesdale is located does not currently operate ABC stores, at least one other city in the same county operates an ABC store. You currently meet all three presently. The rationale behind opening an ABC store in Stokesdale is multifaceted with tangible benefits for the citizens and local economy. While it's true that there are existing ABC stores in proximity to your town, the presence, the absence of one within Stokesdale itself represents an opportunity for enhanced convenience and community reinvestment. A local ABC store would not only provide convenience for your residents but generate revenue that directly benefits the community. The Greensboro ABC model rooted in the responsible sale of spirituous liquor and prudent business management demonstrates the potential for substantial returns that can be channeled back into Stokesdale. For instance, the partnership between the town of Summerfield and the city of Greensboro to operate an ABC store has yielded significant financial returns, as evidenced by the figures from fiscal year 2023 earnings of $118,507, and the current projections for fiscal year 2024 of $154,908. The Summerfield ABC store has generated substantial revenue, contributing to the economic vitality of that community. The town of Stokesdale will not have to invest any money to open an ABC store and will receive 50% of the net profit. The Greensboro ABC store would be responsible for all expenses to staff, build a store, and inventory needed to open and run the store. The only action that the town council would need to take at this time is to vote on allowing the citizens of Stokesdale to vote yes or no for an ABC store as a ballot initiative. In conclusion, the establishment of an ABC store in Stokesdale represents an opportunity to enhance convenience, stimulate economic growth, and foster responsible alcohol sales within your community. And one of the concerns that the gentleman spoke about in the public comment section, I gave you all the packets you can review, but one of the first things that we always like to talk about in the ABC system is while we do sell responsibly, and we do generate profit from this, 100% of the money does go back to the citizens of the municipalities that we serve. But one of the other things that we're proud of is that we do give back monies to alcohol and substance abuse programs in Guilford County. In fact, this year, we budgeted a little over $200,000. We've been taking, we've been out meeting with those grant programs that have won those awards this year, the last week. It's always great to go see their facilities, they appreciate the money. And one of the things we do recognize is that while we do sell spirituous liquor, that there are negative sides to it through substance abuse, but we do recognize that by supporting programs that do sell, that do support those that struggle with addiction. At this time, if there's any questions for me that you, the council, may have?
If I may, just on Mr. Nguyen's concern about the placement, I know we haven't even discussed placement or anything like that, but are there steps in place to place a store in a location where it won't be right beside of a school or a church, or do you take that into consideration?
Yes, we do. I've been in the North Carolina ABC system since 2019. I started working in Durham, North Carolina, and then moved to Greensboro about three years ago to start running the Greensboro ABC Board. And that's one of the things I'm very conscious of when we're opening a store, is the placement of that store there, when we look at that. One of the things I always try to do is, number one, put it in a commercial area and try to be as close as I can to a grocery store in most cases, because what we sell is a food product. And most groceries, well, all grocery stores that I've been to in North Carolina, they all have alcohol. So it's another thing, it's close to a grocery store that is, you know, that's already selling alcohol, so I feel like it's a place where people know that they can go purchase alcohol. The good thing about our ABC stores is that children, those that struggle, don't have to walk by that while they're in the grocery store shopping. We are in a segregated space, we'd be in a freestanding store.
How many ABC stores are under your umbrella? Because I'm noticing Oak Ridge is not included in your comparable numbers, but my understanding is they fall under a different-
Yes, sir, they do. They fall under Triad ABC, which is, they have, they're in several counties, it's mainly Forsyth County, but there's a store, I think, Oak Ridge, Stokes County, Davie County, and Davidson County as well. Guilford County, Greensboro ABC, we're currently, the only store that is not within the city limits is Summerfield location, and this would be another location that we would be looking at. We currently have 16 stores, we have two new ones that will be under construction in the next fiscal year, and then we're just looking to open more stores throughout the county. Part of that is, and I know you all know from the economic development standpoint, there's so many jobs that are coming in, you know, with just what's going on at the airport, which is close to you with Sonic Boom, Marshall Aerospace, and Toyota South of here, you're already seeing the growth. And our goal is not to saturate the area with spirituous liquor, but is to serve citizens as they come in, because what we found with the North Carolina ABC system is we do a very good job with the C in ABC, which is control, selling, responsibly selling alcohol. We've proven that when you look at data across the United States. And the important thing with people coming in is folks that come in from a state where it's a private state, where you can get it on every corner, it's openly accessible, they don't understand sometimes when they come into a controlled state what it is. So we're trying to make locations more convenient and look more like a private state, but with the control piece is a very central aspect of what we're doing to make sure that we're responsibly selling spirituous liquor.
Now, I'm looking at Summerfield's numbers. Now, our population's different than Summerfield's.
Yes, sir.
It's not fair to think we could have 154,000, but they've operated a store for-
Since, yeah, 2005 is when they were chartered there. I was just using that example to show you, though, how, what they are currently getting to maximize that, yeah.
Absolutely. But I would think there would be some more heavier operational cost upfront, and the distribution to the town at the beginning of the process would not be as high. Like, what are you seeing? How does that number get larger?
Well-
I'm not talking about more customers, I'm talking about covering-
Profitability, right, right, profitability of the store. And we do that with Summerfield as well. With the Summerfield, we separate out that profitability on that store by itself. That store is a lease store. We lease over there, we don't own that store. We're trying to own more stores because we know if we own the stores long-term, there will be more profit long-term because the building will be paid off. Our current goal is to purchase the property and then try to finance a building over five years so that it's paid off, so that those costs are covered in that first five years, and then after that, that profit should increase significantly once that building's paid off.
Is the store near the Cardinal or Fleming Road, is that under your umbrella?
Yes, sir, it is.
And it's my understanding that one is, is it closing? Am I correct?
We had looked at closing that store. We're going to open, we're opening a store, one of the new stores next year will be off of Redborne Drive, which is at 73 and 68, right there at the sheets there, there's a new store going in there. We looked at the numbers on that and the traffic patterns, we're probably going to keep that Fleming Road store open because the store is profitable and it does service that community. If anybody's traveled over there, it's very difficult to get to Fleming Road in that area, so if you live in that area, it's more of a neighborhood store.
Mr. Sullivan, have you had Stokesdale citizens reach out to you asking for an ABC store?
No, sir. Mr. Rigsby reached out to me, he's a citizen, he would have reached out to me about it, and it was a topic that was covered, I guess, in 2017, was just revisiting that as a revenue, possible way to generate more revenue.
When you're talking about grant money, where does that grant money come from? Does that come out of the net operating? I mean, does that come out of the operating expenses and then the net? Then you have the net-
It comes out of the profit before the profit distributions.
So in other words, y'all do the grants and then you do the distributions?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Have you ever had a store that didn't make money?
No, sir.
Ever had a store?
No, sir. Not in my five years' experience, I have not, no, sir.
Right.
I would like to, I was just doing some research on my phone, I know we had talked about the referendum a few years back. It also appears that there was some discussion about '09 about this as well, but I think that was involving the Triad ABC Commission, not your group.
Yeah, the best I could find was 2009 was Liquor by the Drink, when the citizens voted Liquor by the Drink in 2009. I think there was some talk about 2012. I couldn't find anything. I had some notes from the previous general manager for Greensboro ABC in 2017 where the, I get, there was discussion about the same thing, for the citizens to vote, and the ABC commission at the time said there were not enough registered voters, was what I got. I forwarded those emails to the town attorney.
They did both votes at the same time. Both questions on the ballot at the same time, I believe that was '09, and then it came up, I forget what year it was, but it came up- It came up, that's, that's when they were gonna go across from Mr. Win's church there. And I believe somebody was, was thinking about it, and then the ABC board ended up not wanting to do it.
Right.
Because the council at that time did approve that.
Okay.
And, you know.
Yeah, and that's as far as I could see in the emails. I couldn't tell, I didn't have the others, these were printed emails. They weren't emails that I could see in the system, so they were in the file I've got over here if you wanted to look at it afterwards.
But you said that there wasn't enough voters, because we have voted on this before. You said there wasn't enough, there was four hundred and something to two hundred, it was four hundred, it was like, it was like sixty, forty. There was four hundred and some voters voted for it and almost three hundred against it.
What the general statute was is it has to be a thousand registered voters, and I guess what the, the administrator for the ABC Commission at the time said, that Stokesdale did not meet that requirement at the time. That's what I was, that's what I was reading in the emails.
We had plenty of registered voters.
Right.
We didn't, you didn't get a thousand people to vote for it, but?
Okay.
But there was plenty of registered voters then. There was a whole lot more than a thousand voters, so that was, that's?
Jimmy's bringing up a good question that I wondered about as well. If the votes totaled about seven hundred, I mean, surely we had more than a thousand voters. Our population was five thousand?
Right.
Forty-six at the time. I'm just struggling to believe that we didn't have enough registered voters.
We normally don't get about fifteen percent.
Right. And again, that's the part where I don't, in that, that, and there was no, I lost that chain, after that email, I didn't see what the response was, but it was after those two emails that was sequenced in my, the notes that I have in the folder on this, was that that's when the Greensboro ABC Board came back, was after the administrator Herring at the time said that there weren't enough registered voters. That was his concern, is there weren't registered voters. And, and I wasn't here at the time, and I don't, I don't know what the number would be on that at the time.
I promise you, there was a lot more than a thousand voters.
And I would assume that looking?
The vote was four fifteen to two seventy-six.
Right.
Hundred ninety-one people that voted.
Yeah, we had looked at the, some of the election results that year and, and assuming that the Stokesdale precinct matches up with the corporate limits of Stokesdale, which it looks like it does, I think there were over four thousand registered voters then. But I think, I think the staff, the ABC board may have interpreted the statute wrong to say a thousand people voting as opposed to a thousand registered voters.
It was, it was fifteen percent voter turnout.
Okay.
So, so that would bring up a question, I think, that has been tossed around. So if that was truly on the, on the ballot and it did pass, like it sounds like it passed, is there a need for another vote?
That we'd have to ask Mr. Win, Mr. Winfrey about.
Yeah, and I, I guess I wanna talk to ABC's attorney too, but?
Right.
If it, if it passed, but I just haven't found the campus results that shows that ABC passed. I mean, Rob, you may have?
Yeah, I've got it. So on November third, two thousand and nine, at that municipal election, it's got two votes here, one vote being Stokesdale ABC store, the second vote being Stokesdale mixed beverage. And the votes for were four hundred and fifteen, against two seventy-four, and that was for the ABC store. And then mixed beverage, just for the sake of it being here, was four ten to two seventy-six, although I know it's two separate topics. So it did pass. I was able, I was looking at the, the Board of Elections website here, starting with that twenty seventeen vote. It looked like in twenty seventeen, Stokesdale had three thousand nine hundred and twelve registered voters. And I'm in the process now of figuring out how many we had on November third, two thousand and nine.
And that was fifteen years ago, right?
Correct.
And also, I believe, like I said, you may do better on the computer than I'm on my phone, but I believe that oh-nine was to enter in an agreement with the Triad ABC Commission, it wasn't with Greensboro.
I, yeah, I'm not sure on that.
So would that, would that be a conflict or?
If the contract was never, it would had to have been, it would have to, the city count, the town councils would have, the city council would have had to have agreed, and then the ABC Commission would have had to sign off on it for it to have been authorized.
But, but that wouldn't precede the referendum, though. The referendum would?
No, if the referendum, if that, from what I'm hearing, I would have to defer to, to Mr. Winfrey, but I, I would say that it passed back then, in my opinion. I don't, and that would go back to the ABC Commission. I don't know what the, I don't know what the issue was there with the ABC Commission, because that goes back twenty seventeen, and that, that administration is not, is no longer in there, so.
Actually, that was fifteen years ago. It's a long time.
Yeah, that was. And then two, but twenty seventeen was when the last, was the last conversation, I guess, that the Stokesdale had with Greensboro ABC.
That's right.
Right.
But there was no interest?
I think, and I, I could show you the emails, but I think it, when I sent them to, to Mr. Winfrey, I think what, what I saw in there was that the ABC Commission was saying they weren't going to, the way I read it was ABC Commission was not going to authorize a new store or the merger of a store, because they have to have, they have to have the final say after the agreement is made. They would have to have the final say.
There was, there was a gentleman that was trying, he was wanting to put one down near the Dollar General, Mr. Win. He remembers it well, he was here, and I was here too. And that, you know, I guess they approved it, but, but then the ABC store, I mean, the ABC board didn't, you know, didn't want to do it, so.
I, I think they probably, I really, because there's two, there's two, you have to have the agreement, but then the ABC Commission, this, the way I read the emails, the ABC Commission said that they would not approve the agreement, was what I'm getting out of the emails that I was reading from back then. So I think we, Greensboro probably wanted to do it, but the ABC Commission, I think at the time said no for some reason. I, I don't know what that was.
You mean the state ABC Commission or the?
Yes, state ABC Commission, yes, I'm sorry. North Carolina ABC Commission, is what I'm seeing from the emails that I, that I've sent forward to Mr. Winfrey, so he can, that's all that I have. And those were printed, again, I can't get to the, those goes back way back, so I can't get those out of the server, so.
They might have looked at some history and thought, well, we might not have put a store out here.
What is the process for, for your board to, to vet out a potential new store and the location? Not necessarily a new municipality, that's kind of different, but?
Right.
You know, what, what, what is your process? And have you done any vetting for the town of Stokesdale?
I, I've done some minimal, I've, I've done, I've done a cursory look at it since we've, we've been talking, but I would say with, I think when you look at anything that's in the, the four twenty-one corridor, with what's going on economically, I think that in any communities within that, where you know that there's gonna be growth, I think it's a community that we're looking at right now. We want to get ahead of it because, especially if we're gonna buy land and invest in that property, it's, it's, land is only gonna get more expensive over time. So I think that it would cut down on some of the costs of that initially. That's one of the things we look at, is what we're able to get into. But I think that as much as Guilford County is gonna start growing over the next decade, I think the, the need is there, and we can't, we can't turn us, open a store overnight. It would take, you know, if you're gonna build a store, it's gonna take two or three years to get through the process anyway, you know, to get the site plan approved and get the building design and everything, you get it constructed. So it's not something that's immediate that's gonna happen.
Sure, sure. Any other questions?
Mr. Foy, I have a few questions for Mr. Sullivan, if you all would bear with me. Mr. Sullivan, I was on the council in March, on March ninth, two thousand and seventeen, the last vote that was taken that I'm aware of, and that vote was a resolution authorizing the merger of the town's newly approved ABC system with the city of Greensboro ABC. Did that actually happen, yes or no?
I'd have to go back and check on the agreement. I do not see, I'll have to check, the file that I have, I did not see an agreement in there. I can go back and look and see in other files.
Would you care to speculate as to why that didn't happen?
Why the merger didn't happen? That's what I'm saying, from what I can tell in the emails from twenty seventeen, what I've read, looked like I read is the North Carolina ABC Commission said that they, that they were not going to approve that. For what reason, I do not know. I'd have to do a little more research on that.
Okay, so as far as your presence here today, that was solely at the request of Council Member Rigsby initiated this. You haven't had any requests from Stokesdale citizens? You haven't had any requests from someone that wants to sell a parcel of land to the ABC board to construct a store?
Absolutely not, sir. We do not, we treat property just like the town council would. We, we keep that, we do not do that.
Okay. The, the feedback that I recall last time this was discussed was that your board had determined based off of a demographic study that there wasn't sufficient business here to support a store and, and pay all the bills and realize any significant revenue, due in part by the fact that you can't get to Stokesdale without passing by an ABC store. I have mapped them myself. You literally can't get here without passing an ABC store. And, and I know I don't have citizens saying, gee gosh, I wish there was an ABC store here because it's a long and arduous journey for me to get to one. And in the interest of full disclosure, I voted against it the last time it was in front of me, and I will this time. I'd like for there to be one place where there's not an ABC store. Does every community have to, have to have an ABC store? That's a philosophical question. I hear you in regards to the ABC system being responsible and, I, I have done some preliminary reading, you know, I know North Carolina is kind of one of those places where the ABC sales are, the, our system is such that they're already very controlled as opposed to someplace like South Carolina. And so that gives me some comfort that this is regulated. I'm, I'm not here to try to stop people from drinking, but you may not be aware that Stokesdale has a, has a checkered history with alcohol that goes back many, many years. You know, a lot of people in this room that weren't living here at that, at that time, and even before my time here, I've been here all my life. And so this is a very hard sell for me. I, I really don't care if it brought to town a million dollars a year, but as Pastor Bailey mentioned, you know, love conquers all, and I, I would hope this council loves its citizens enough to think very carefully before they, they vote to pursue this further. It is an issue that easily divides our citizens, neighbor against neighbor, relative against relative, and so on and so on. Community, everybody's got their opinion. And I continue to err on the side of caution where this is concerned. I question how much revenue could be generated, given that you can't get to Stokesdale without riding by an ABC store, given the probable locations where you could locate a store. Just to use as an example, you mentioned a grocery store. We, we have a food line in town. If it were in proximity to that food line, it would be just on the other side of the creek, basically, from the store in Oak Ridge. And, and, you know, on and on it goes, but in regards to the separation from churches, schools, and I'll throw in daycares, that is very important to me, as Reverend Win mentioned. I, I, I don't know what the proper distance is, but the last thing I want to see is somebody stepping out of church on Sunday morning and looking across at an ABC store. I, I just?
And I agree with you on that.
And, and, you know, Reverend Win has mentioned the AA organization. Because of the way AA is structured and they have what they call birthday celebrations, I have attended some AA meetings, and I, I know what that is. I know how large it is. I know they don't like to get political and they're not, basically, they're not going to, so that a bunch of AA members are not gonna show up and speak against an ABC store in Stokesdale. But those people struggle. This is a, a life-threatening disease, if you want to call it that. And to have those stores in your community for those people, that is a real danger to them. You know, for others that can drink a little bit and stop at that, I, you know, great, it's a convenience for them. I've always been amazed when I go in an ABC store, I'm mostly there to get an empty box, because I like to use y'all's empty boxes for helping people move and what have you. I'm always amazed at how perfect the lighting is, the mirrors, everything is just absolutely perfect, the display of the product. And it makes me wonder why you have to work so hard to present that product in, in that fashion to, to get people to buy it, but I, I, this is a very hard sell for me, even bad as the town of Stokesdale needs money. The town of Stokesdale lost its sales tax distribution money from Guilford County several years back. That mounts to a minimum of a million and probably as much as two and a half or, or even more that we are suffering because of that decision rendered by the Guilford County Commissioners. I haven't given up on that. I, I think that whatever revenue that we accumulate from an ABC store is, is gonna be offset by troubles that ABC store brings. That, that's my firm belief. I, I think if the Summerfield store, you know, you could have that, that income, and if you have that income, is that enough revenue for an ABC store to successfully operate here in Stokesdale? Is that enough?
When you, when you look at revenue numbers, that's when you brought, the Fleming Road store was a great example. That's honestly one of our lower volume stores, one of our lowest volume stores that we have in the system. And it's, it's actually, when you look at the expenses, the way we control expenses with, in the store, it's one of our, it's a very profitable store. When you look at it from a profit standpoint, because we are, we are running it like a business and we do want it to be profitable. And that store actually is very, a very profitable store where it is, and as small as it is at that location.
Well, you're, you're basically operating a monopoly because the state has granted an exclusive franchise to y'all to sell, sell these products. And where in other states, you might have, state of Maryland, you might have liquor stores on the corner and what have you, and I don't, I would like that any better. But it is what it is. When, when we talk about the separation from schools, churches, daycare, I, I don't know, there may, there may be some other businesses that would see this as a conflict. What's the actual law? And then do you have any kind of policy that goes beyond that to, to blend one of your stores into a community?
What I explained earlier, our current policy is we really do our best to be in a commercial center that is going to, especially try to get as close to a grocery store as we can, because they're already selling alcohol there, so it's not gonna be something different in that shopping center. We, and again, we do try to, we take into consideration churches and schools and everything, and that's actually part of the investigation. The ABC Commission, actually, when we propose a new site, they have to actually approve that site before we can purchase the land. And that's some of the things that they take into consideration, is how close it is to a church, a school, and a daycare is actually included in that as well.
Okay, but I'm asking you, sir, how many feet is the crow, crow size? Is it, is it a hundred feet, a thousand feet?
I'd have to check, I'd have to check the actual, the numbers on that. I'm not sure what that is right off the top of my head.
Okay, and it would be safe to say that once this is approved, once it moves forward, this board would have no control over those distances? We could make a request, but that would be it? We would have no legal authority to impose any given distance on, on your ABC board as far as the location of this store?
That would be correct. But, but I can assure you, we would take into account if there were, if we were to say we were going to purchase a piece of property, if there were feedback, that we would take that into consideration.
Once we enter into an agreement, is it possible to, let's say, five years down the road and Mr. J, you put the store too close to a church or whatever, somebody else comes in and says, well, we're, we're just gonna put it here. Can we exit that agreement?
There, there are exit provisions in the, within the agreement. It would be up to town attorney, which you did on those initially, but I think right now, what we're doing because of the cost of having to, because of having to purchase land and build a building, we would be asking for a ten-year initial agreement on that, just to make sure we get a complete return on our investment as far as the property goes, because we'll be putting out a hundred percent of that, that money.
Well, Mr. Sullivan, so there's no way that we can enter into an agreement beforehand here that this store will not be located within a number of feet from a school, a church, or a daycare?
That is something we could discuss with the town attorney in the agreement.
We can put that in our ordinance. You know, I looked at that today, and I thought we might have something, but, but it says that it's three different, three different zonings that you can have with business. It was three different ones, I, I forget what they were. But, but there wasn't anything on the restrictions about distance. There was for books, some bookstore's and things like that, but you could put it, but?
Well?
I don't know how you could put anything on Main Street, Stokesdale, anywhere near that.
I would respond to that, but I respect your, your point, but I would respond to that if this board's willing to work, vote for the ABC store, then this board is probably a little less willing to restrict, that it's gonna be pretty narrow about restricting a little less willing to restrict, that it's going to be pretty narrow about restricting distances.
I didn't say I was willing to vote for it. I just said if that happened, we could.
I'm just saying, I wish we had it there now in place, already passed, to lean on, then that would give me some comfort about the matter.
Well, we're simply voting tonight to allow it to go onto a ballot in November. So, I mean, if there's some restrictions that need to be discussed, we have plenty of time to discuss them.
Well, one thing I, I need to say is, if it passed in 2009, I'm not convinced we need a referendum. If it, if it in fact passed in 2009, I guess I need to speak with Mr. Fox, the ABC board, to make sure that their attorney agrees with me on that point.
You know, that's 15 years ago. We get, you got a 48, 48-hour notice, how long, when did notice go out for this? 48 hours ago? 48 hours ago. There's not 2% of the people in Stokesdale that know we're doing this tonight. And we're going to put something like this on the ballot. I don't like putting it on a ballot anyway. I believe that if we're going to do something, if people want a liquor store here in Stokesdale, there's a process, a petition. And I've got one wrote up here, and I'll never sign it, but it's a petition. And if folks wanted that, you're going to need 1,708 signatures. There's 48, 80 voters, I think it might be a little bit more with the update, it might have been some, this was the last election. And if you want one, and it's that many people that want one, then so be it. But that, that right there is the way this should be done. It should not be put on the ballot by council and 400 people decide one way or the other. You know, this would, you know, give everybody a chance. There's two different ones there, there's one that you can individually or whatever, it's been made up. I hate to even do it, because I don't, I don't particularly like alcohol, I don't care what anybody does. Well, I do care too, I take that back, I do care. It's their business, is all I want to say, it's not any of my business. But, you know, as far as money goes, I don't think Stokesdale is hurting for money, I think we're doing a good job. We just did another balanced budget with no tax. And, you know, we've got to handle situations, but I just, I just wish we wouldn't. If I'd wanted to live where there's a liquor store, I'd move where there was one. I would. I just, I've said it before in here, that Stokesdale's always been different. We've been a great place to live, people have moved in here. We haven't had a liquor store and people have been moving in. It's not like they can't get service somewhere. And I know we can make money. I know we can make money off of it, but, you know, the, you know, government's police powers. I mean, we're going to lock people up for DUIs. We're going to sell them liquor and then we're going to lock them up for DUIs. They're going to lose their jobs, they're going to be in AA. You know, I've had friends, lots of friends that have died. You know, three things, police powers, military, we don't do the military, but improper rights with the courts, those are the main things the government's supposed to do. And I just don't, I just, it bothers me to even be, look, I know the ABC board, if you look at South Carolina and some of those places, you got it. And I'm not calling for prohibition or anything. And I know the statistics that we're way down on the list of consumption and stuff because of it, and it's not for kids. I'm also for freedom too, but I just wish we wouldn't do it. I wish we could have, it could be somewhere, something that you didn't have it. And I'm not telling anybody what to do, I'm not giving, I'm nobody to give anybody any voice, even though I know a lot about it. I know a lot about alcohol. I lost my father when I was 13 years old and I had one heck of a time coming up. I'm lucky to even be sitting here, just to tell you the truth. And I just wish that, I wish the town wouldn't get involved with it. You know, if it was the buyer right going to sell it or something like that or whatever, so be it. But I just don't want to be involved with the government doing it. I mean, you guys can do it any way you want to, but I won't be voting for it.
Mr. Stevenson, is that true? This can be done by petition of the citizens to get it on the ballot?
I would have to refer to the town attorney on that. That is not what I've read in general statute. It's either council can, what I've read is the council votes to put it on the ballot and then the citizens decide on the ballot whether they want an ABC store or not there in their jurisdiction.
Because I believe Councilman Landoff is correct.
I promise you that's right.
Mr. Winfrey?
I don't know the answer to that question. I guess it may be in the town charter as opposed to in the general statutes, but that's got to do with the state.
But if we, if we are a town, and we talked earlier about the constitution being in the building and constitutions of the people, by the people, for the people, then will we not be more righteous to let the people decide versus, versus taking a petition around, giving our opinion before we have that person sign a petition for or against? And there's still no validity that that person even lives in the city lines. We all know petitions can be falsified. Voting is our most sacred right, so why not let the people or the citizens exercise that right? You know, you guys talk about this all the time, about the citizens and the citizens, we're here for the citizens. But when something comes up you don't like, then you're going to take that citizen right away from them. And I think that's a little arbitrary.
Well, how are we taking somebody's right away from them? Who's asked for this, Jim?
You're not going to let them vote on it.
Who's asked for it?
I have.
You have?
I've asked, I've asked to put it on the ballot, I'm not asked to put it on the ballot, I've asked to put it on the ballot and let the citizens.
I haven't had one citizen.
I've got people in, I have, I've got people in my neighborhood that have asked about it. And I can bring them up here if you need me to. But I'm just telling, it's, it's to ask to put it on the ballot, and you know, we can't, we can't have it both ways, guys. We can't speak for the citizens half the time and speak against them the other half.
How are we speaking against them?
Because you're speaking for them right now and not giving them the right to have their own opinion.
That's nobody, nobody's given, nobody's stopping anything. There's, if it, okay, if it wasn't for this right here, I would say, okay, let's do that. That's okay, if that's what you want to do. But that's the deal, you know, I can't even believe it. I just, I mean.
I can't believe we would not let our own citizens, our own educated citizens have a, have a voice in anything that we would, we would do.
They may not have to, they may go back and have that.
And they may vote against it, and that's fine, but they should still have that right to vote.
I heard that same stuff the last time. That's what, that's exactly what.
And they voted for it.
That's the right to vote. Well, 400 people voted for it.
Well, the majority voted for it and that's all that matters in any election.
Yeah, that's right. 400 people voted for it.
And that's about the same number that voted for each of us to be on this council.
Yeah, that's right.
Was about 400 people.
So there are a number of places in the state statute that were there provisions to allow the citizens to sign a petition to get a government to take a specific action. One of them that I can think of is a petition that citizens might sign to change our form of government, either to or from a mayor council form of government, for example. That is a, one of those places where the state gives the citizens the option of signing a petition in order to get a matter on a ballot. This is no different. We're not taking, we're not contemplating taking away any citizen's right to vote. Councilman Landoff merely pointing out that citizens already have that right to petition for this to be placed on the ballots if they so choose.
So I think it's good, obviously, good discussion will hopefully, preferably lead to, you know, good outcomes in this matter. But, you know, being respectful of others' different opinions, I think is, is paramount in this. And I think a lot of good points have been brought up. I just want to kind of go back to, to, if there was a referendum in 2009 and it passed, I, I don't understand why we would need to vote for this again if the law says that 1,000 registered voters are required, because there were 1,000 registered voters in 2009. And to be fair, I, I'll just come out and say, I will be voting for this. Strictly from really just a revenue standpoint for the town of Stokesdale. When I look at our peer towns, somewhat peer towns, they have larger populations, but, you know, Summerfield at 150,000 a year and I don't know what Oak Ridge is, they're budgeted for north of 200, but I don't have the data in front of me. But, you know, I think, I think it would be prudent to let the citizen side decide on that, and I would, I would support that. But again, I just feel like some, some bad information has been unfortunately conveyed to you. If you were told we didn't have 1,000 registered voters when this passed, because that just, that just does not pass the smell test. And then if you fast forward to 2017, based off the motion that Tim was referring to, I'm not sure why the town council at the time would have even been considering a location of an ABC store before, excuse me, unless there was already the referendum that was required by statute to take place. So I'm just not so sure that a referendum is necessary here. Because we're discussing this, I felt that it was appropriate to convey my, how I would vote on this. I think that's only fair with, I think Tim and Jimmy have brought up some really valid concerns on that. I don't, that's just how I feel, but.
I want to add just some clarification, and I don't know, like I said, hard on my phone, but I think the referendum was in 2017 with the Greensboro, the Greensboro Board. I think what happened in 2009 was with the Triad Board. I think it's two separate incident or two separate issues. So I just don't, don't want, I think we need to see what happened in 17, because that was when I think it actually went on the ballot. The 09 or whatever, I think that was something different, based on what I, a little bit I'm reading right here.
It did not go on the ballot in 2017, Mr. Rixby, I was here. I got the minutes in my hand.
You know, I've got a suggestion. We don't even know what we're doing. We don't know whether we need a referendum or we don't need a referendum. So why don't we put, we table this till next month and find out the facts?
Is that a motion to table?
Yes, I make a motion to table to find out the facts. We may not even need it, we may be sitting here fussing among each other for no reason. Well, and I hope, I hope we do need one.
Then I will second that motion.
Related to that, let me say that the, I think Mr. Wagner talked to the, Mr. Calacut, the Director of Elections. As long as they know by August 1, they can put it on the ballot if that's the decision that, if you want to go that way. The deadline to let the County Board of Elections know that is August 1, so.
What does it cost to put it on the ballot? I know there's a cost associated with.
I can't answer for say. I know there's a cost associated when we have a municipal election and they come out here and have their officials from the county maintain that election, oversee that election. Now, where this would be added to the November ballot for a general election that's already happening, I don't know what the cost is, but I can't say for sure there is, can't say for sure there's not. But I would, I would err on the side of caution and say there is a cost.
Well, there's another thing we can find out. And you'll have time to get it on the ballot if that be the case.
The chair has a motion and a second.
Is it appropriate for someone to push my ballot, mine to next month?
I'm sorry, Jim, Jim, I'm sorry if you.
I'm just asking.
No, no, I'm not trying to be inappropriate, I would like the facts before we do a vote. We may not even need to do it.
So, that's a good point, Jimmy.
But I'll withdraw the motion if that's, if you feel like I'm stepping on your toes, because I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to find out, do we really? I mean, we may have just sit here and fuss with each other for no reason whatsoever.
I think the, the purpose of tonight was to, to enter in a preliminary agreement with the Greensboro Board. It doesn't, it doesn't, I mean, if we enter in that agreement tonight and he comes up and says, we do our research and he says, you don't need an amendment or you don't need a referendum, then it's still, I mean, it's still appropriate for us to vote tonight and to find to do this research. And if it, I, I would, I'd rather vote, but go ahead.
I mean, I'm withdrawing my motion. I think it's, you know, a 48-hour notice for the town to put something on the ballot like this.
That's a good point.
Well, that said, I'll make the same motion that Mr. Landoff made to table this until a later date, until we do more research and it's clear what has already been done and what our options are and what those costs are going to be. So I'll make that motion.
Are you saying July or just some indefinite date?
Table it to a later date. I'm not, I hear you about the August 1st deadline. The other side should have started sooner, in my opinion on this, because it's just got a lot of moving parts. As Mr. Sullivan stated, it'll take some time to build a store and put it in place anyway. What's the rush? We want to get it right, not, I mean, there's no reason, is there a reason to be in a, really, is there a reason to be in a rush on this issue?
Just to get it on the ballot. I think there is a timeline. I think it has to be on the ballot 60, is it 60 days or? No, I'm sorry, it's 60 or 90 days, it has to be on the ballot prior to.
So we have a motion on the table. We need a second to continue this until July, well, you said a later date, but.
Put the date, I mean, put the date for next meeting. I mean, we can take, we can talk about it again, I mean, if you want to make them, I mean, you do what you want to, it's your motion.
Well, what does the statute say? We've referred to a statute, you know, for about 30 minutes now, but can we find the statute and read it?
Well, the statute says that the, that the town, as long as it has 1,000 registered voters, can have a referendum. And it appears that there was a referendum, I don't see in the statute, and I guess I could do, I probably should do more research to see if there's some, if it lapses, if it's not acted upon within a certain period of time. But that's not jumping out at me that that's in fact the case. But the relevant statute is 18B-600, which says, you know.
Y'all should have a copy of that.
Yeah, all the statutes are, I provided those for you tonight.
Okay, I haven't had time to review this.
Not that I gave it to you at the meeting, yes.
Do you have a copy of this?
I do.
I'm not trying to stall the vote, but we just referred to a statute for a long time now, but we haven't really taken time to understand what it even says or means.
So I guess dealing with D, so 118B-600D deals with the city election, which appears to have happened in 2009, if I'm reading the records right. But I haven't seen the official abstract of that election, but I have no reason to doubt that's what's online is incorrect. In other words, I looked at the canvas of the 2009 results that appears online and it appears that it did pass by 400 some votes, 200 some votes back in 2009.
Well, I do believe, and again, correct me if, I do believe that's with another system. That was not with the Greensboro system.
And I'm not sure.
I don't, I don't think it was, I don't think they were doing it with a system, it was for to do that.
It was to have ABC stores.
For ABC store, ABC store and to do the liquor by the drink. And of course, they, you know, they got the restaurant down.
Hopefully I can provide some clarification.
It was, I remember voting, I remember, I remember the vote.
So I do have the, the resolution from that, that meeting, let's see here, I just need to.
2009?
Yes, yes, 2009. So these are the minutes from Thursday, July 16, 2009. And I will say this was a long time ago, so I'll give credit to the Northwest Observer for helping me track down a date.
I've got those articles in my.
There you go, there you go. But, so at that meeting, there was a three to two vote. And I'll start by saying this was a meeting where a, a lot of, a lot of folks came out and spoke. I don't necessarily see the wording here for a public hearing, but it was so large that it took place at the dining room of the Stokes Elementary School. And at the end of these discussions here, there was a vote put forward. Council voted three to two to adopt the resolutions. And then those resolutions are attached to these minutes. The first resolution being a resolution requesting the Guilford County Board of Elections to call and conduct a special election on November 3, 2009. To place on the November 3, 2009 ballot, a referendum vote to enable the location of an ABC store in the boundaries of the town of Stokesdale. And I've read through here, I don't see any verbiage that mentions a specific branch of the ABC Board. Was it Triad Municipal? And then, of course, there's a second resolution here for that, for the liquor by the drink, or I think they call it mixed beverage. But that is what happened in 09. And it did pass, and we did have 1,000 registered voters, I feel certain, but I, using the Guilford County website here, I'm just not able to confirm the amount of registered voters we had at that election. Typically, they have a column for registered voters, this 2009, at least it's not on here.
And by the way, I spoke at the meeting where they voted to do that, and I said the same thing I've said tonight about the petition, exactly the same thing I've said tonight. So that's 15 years ago, I'm still consistent with what I said then.
And you're correct on that, that's, within that same statute that Mr. Winfrey mentioned earlier, there is a section down at, let's see, F3. It says, "The election shall be held by the County Board of Elections upon a petition of 25% of the registered voters of the township."
Is that 25? I don't know if it changed any or not, but I said the same thing, I actually had a petition that night. You know, for, to do it.
Here's why I'll support continuing this. And Jimmy said it twice, but 40, only 48 hours notice to the citizens and, you know, that's key. I know that's important, especially important to you, Jimmy, and I admire you for that. I also support continuing it, simply because I'm not convinced that everybody has the correct information. So I believe that, you know, with Chuck's support and maybe Mr. Fox, your attorney, we can at least get the correct information to discuss this in July. I've already, you know, said where, how I feel, and I think.
I've already, you know, said where, how I feel, and I think, you know, all the gentlemen here have. But, uh, we do have a motion to continue this.
No, sir. Mr. Foy, my motion was to table this.
And I'll make a motion to continue this till the July meeting.
Hold, hold on here a minute. That, there, there aren't very many things that I can absolutely do, but I am a sitting board member and I can make a motion. And you'd have no right to leave over top of my motion, Mr. Rigsby.
Well, you just said you made a motion to table it.
I made a motion to table the ABC store resolution that we're discussing right now that's on the agenda. It may be that no board member will second this motion, but the Chair is obligated to recognize my motion. And the town clerk is obligated to put it in these minutes when he writes it by state law. I insist on those two things happening if nothing else happens in this meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. So what I was trying to do was recognize your motion, and it does not have a second yet, but did, did I state it wrong by using the word continue instead of table?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion to table.
To table this resolution.
To table this resolution.
Yep, the, I don't know what agenda nu- number it is. Let, let me be sure I read it into the record.
This is agenda item number eleven.
I apologize. Let me get my agenda back up here. My motion is to table agenda item number eleven, which is a consideration of a resolution requesting the Guilford County Board of Elections to add a referendum to the November two thousand twenty-four ballot for a vote to en- enable the location of an ABC store in the corporate boundaries of the town of Stokesdale. That is my motion.
All right, do we have a second?
So when you say table. Well, so motion to table just, uh, means that you end debate about it and the matter's dead for this meeting.
Say that again.
If you table it, then there's no more, be no more debate about it, no vote on it, the, the topic is dead for this meeting.
For this meeting, but.
And.
I'm, I'm not trying to, although I would like to. I'm not trying to knock Jim out of his item. And you know I'm gonna second any motion that's made, even I second Jim's motion to vote on it as far as that went, uh, cause I said I would, but. Miss. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I, I mean, I'm just, I'm not trying to not.
Mr. Winfrey, the understanding of the use of that word table is that it can be, council can open this item up at a future meeting, but not necessarily the next meeting, but we're setting this aside for the moment, and my intent is that our council members, the town attorney, the town staff, uh, can, we can all educate ourselves about what's been done previously and try to figure out what the next step might be for this, either whichever side one might happen to be on. Uh, there's, there's a lot of, uh, confusion about this particular subject. And, uh, I, I think that's the most appropriate motion that I can make at this particular juncture in time, handle this.
So I don't want to mince words between continue and table, so I'll second your motion.
Well, let's do a little discussion.
Okay, let's do that, but we need a second.
The reason I wanted to continue it is because, and I know you're tabling and, but if we're gonna talk about it next meeting, I want the citizens to know that we're gonna talk about it, and by using the word continue to then, or table it to then, to that date.
Okay.
It, the reason I say that is because then the citizens are on notice that, that we're doing this, and then they can make their calls or they can, they do whatever. They'll know. They have an opportunity to know. I'm sure it'll be in the Northwest.
Okay.
I hope.
Okay, Jimmy, Jimmy Landor, you're, you're, what you want to see happen is the citizens to be informed of a, of a, of a date when we're gonna revisit this. Hopefully everybody will have their ducks in a row. Okay, with that said, uh, since you, uh, hopefully you will, uh, second my motion. I will modify my motion to read this a motion to continue versus a motion to table. Are we clear, Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will say the motion is already consecutive by Mr. Foy. So now we just need to get Mr. Foy's approval of your amendment.
Mr. Foy, would you consent to the change?
I will. And the date be July the eleventh, the next?
The next regular town council meeting, continue to the next regular town council meeting.
Second, we're cool.
Correct.
All right, is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. I'll call question, Jim.
Aye.
Am I? Jimmy? Tim?
Aye.
And I am aye.
All right, Mike. All right, the motion passes five to zero to continue, uh, this discussion to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foy.
All right, next up on the agenda, uh, clarification on town ordinance, uh, Mr. Bill Greco is here.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council staff. Bill Greco, P O Box three four seven Oak Ridge. Given the length of the meeting, I'm going to speak quickly, but I'm certainly able to slow down and dive in at detail as needed. Excuse me. We have an ordinance question here this evening, a process question. Uh, as you should be aware, there's no such thing as a perfect ordinance. Uh, every ordinance in existence has issues. That's why they all have provisions for waivers, provisions for variances, provisions for appeals. One of our issues here in Stokesdale, excuse me, goodness, pollen. Uh, we don't have a lot of continuity. Oftentimes in jurisdictions, I work in a lot of places. One of the first things I do when I go to a new place is I research their ordinances, their documents. I walk in the door somewhere and I say, I've read your books. Now tell me how we do things. We have no continuity here, so we do have new people coming in and out and making, uh, what is a judgment call or a personal preference, subjectivity, that sort of thing. Uh, it's just part of it. Why we're here this evening is because, um, and I will do this, I'm very guilty of it. When I find something in that ordinance that proves my point, I'll cite it and read it to you. It's Article nine, administration says plainly, "The governing body shall provide for the manner in which the provisions of this ordinance are enforced and interpreted and so forth and so on." It is your responsibility and yours alone to make these decisions.
What's your question, Bill?
Our question is, we have, um, water system plans. We have a subdivision. That subdivision is currently in various stages of review, uh, with a number of different plans, be that the Health Department, DOT, our grading permit was recently approved, uh, watershed review's underway. We came to Town Hall with a check for forty-four hundred dollars and a set of plans and said, we'd like to submit our water plans. Town Hall is frankly not confident of procedures. They reached out to Guilford County. Guilford County initially said, you can't put in any improvements until preliminary plat is in place. We're not trying to put in improvements. We're trying to get our plans reviewed. We need our plans to go to the towns consultant first, then they will go to the state. We'll review and approval. At some point further down the road, we will be putting in improvements. So we are at an impasse with the town staff being directed by Guilford County staff that we cannot submit. There are two relevant sections in the ordinance that I've provided for you. Most articles and chapters in the ordinance start big and work small. The relevant piece, uh, is Section five, subdivisions, coordination with other procedures. "To lessen the time required to attain all necessary approvals and facilitate the processing of applications, an applicant may start the subdivision approval process simultaneously with applications for grading permits or other applications for approvals required for the particular project." A plain English reading of that tells me, and I hope it tells you, you should take my money in the morning and let's move on and submit these plans. They can be reviewed simultaneously. In Section three of our ordinance, which is site plans, it has the exact same language. In the past, let's call it twenty-some plus years, that's how we've done business in Stokesdale. You submit all your plans simultaneously. Guilford County staff has found a section in the ordinance, five dash seven, street and utility construction. "Street and utility construction plans for all street, water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer facilities shall be submitted to the jurisdiction following preliminary plat approval." Plain English reading of that, Guilford County staff is correct. That says what it says. The ordinance disagrees with itself. That sentence from five seven, I would point out is wildly wrong. It says, "Plans for street, water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer facilities shall be submitted to the jurisdiction." So let's stop there. Number one, you don't review street plans. Number two, you don't review water plans. Number three, you don't review sanitary sewer plans or storm sewer. Number four, it says to the jurisdiction. Look up the definition of jurisdiction in your ordinance. That's essentially a description of Guilford County. So that, that's, that whole section's just fraught with problems. Such a real simple thing. Plans submitted simultaneously for review. It's not an authorization to construct. It's not a license to build anything. It's not a building permit. It's just simply, when you're building a residential subdivision, there are a number of plans that go to a number of departments, a number of people for review. Eventually they get approved and all of that mess of paperwork comes back together and then you start building a subdivision. So as council, I'm asking you to make the determination that Section five dash two overrides five dash seven.
Mr. Greco, if I can, I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so, so you have been here with your check and your check was refused. Is, is that true?
Uh, I don't know that they physically brought the check. We got the amount and we're ready to submit, and we were told, no, we cannot submit.
And, and basically that was a function of Mr. Snyder and Guilford County planning, being in Greensboro and the rest of the Stokesdale staff being here and et cetera. You, your intent was to present the check and, and the application and the necessary paperwork?
Correct.
Okay. And you're okay in the event that for whatever reason your preliminary plat is turned down? You do understand that if you do this, you will not receive a refund for the, whatever monies you pay to have the water plan reviewed?
One hundred percent.
If, if it, if you have to stop, you understand that we won't grant you a, a refund, so that's, that's not, not an issue.
Not an issue.
Okay. I am in receipt of your June twelfth, two thousand thirty-four email. I hope the rest of council is. I don't know if Mr. Winfrey received this. I too can read and I agree with, uh, Mr. Greco that, that our ordinance, uh, is disagreeing with itself. You know, I'm comfortable making a motion to let Section five two govern in this case and allow Mr. Greco and Land Solutions to proceed by, uh, submitting the application for the preliminary plat and the water system plan inspection at the same time, so long as all paperwork is filed, all the plans required are submitted and all the fees are planned. Excuse me, are paid. That's my motion.
I'm second the motion.
I guess I'm not clear. So five point two though says simultaneously, so I guess the question I wasn't clear about is have the water plans been submitted simultaneously with the subdivision plans?
We were denied submittal. We would like to submit them.
You, the subdivision plans and the water plans?
Correct. We have plans all in multiple places currently.
Okay, okay.
Robbie?
Yes.
Well, you, you, you got any background on that part?
Well, so I can say I, it's, it, I can say with, with certainty, unless it's happened today, uh, no check has been provided to us for water line plans. Now, we did get a forty-nine hundred dollar check for preliminary plat review. But I, that preliminary plat review has not made its way to Guilford County yet, it's my understanding. And so that, that preliminary plat needs to go to Guilford County regardless, and so that, that needs to go. I, I, I guess I would say in order to, to justify the word simultaneously, I would say preliminary plat and water plan together. Uh, obviously you can't take one in Stokesdale, one in Greensboro at the same time, but within a reasonable amount of time. So I wouldn't say that the water line review, water line plan review has been declined. Uh, one portion of that submittal is the payment and we have not received payment.
You'll receive it in the morning.
We won't be open tomorrow, but we'll be here on Monday.
Monday then, works for me.
Well, Mr. Greco is correct in that Justin Snyder wrote on Wednesday, June the twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, at twelve forty P M, informing him that he needed to submit the preliminary plat for approval first, and that he couldn't submit the, as I understand this email, he couldn't submit the necessary, uh, the required water inspection fee, uh, application fees, et cetera. And so I, I'm tracking through all this. This is just kind of a, what I basically see is one hand not knowing what the other hand's doing and, and some confusion. There's, there's no real problem here that I can see. There, there's no reason to delay Mr. Greco and Land Solutions and his client, uh, just because we can.
I agree with that. So i- if, if you come in Monday and, and pay for this, are you gonna send the, uh, preliminary plat on Monday to, to Mr. Snyder?
There you go.
I'll say, I mean, that's the si- that's the same time.
There it is. All right. Is there any further questions or discussion?
Robbie, you?
Yeah, yeah, no, that sounds right. Yeah, like I said, I, I, I never did, um, I never really see an issue with submitting them all at the same time, especially if, if Mr. Greco is, is, understands that, uh, the, that, uh, the preliminary plat is, is the, kind of the ruling thing and, and make sure that it's good, but, um, yeah, I, I think it's fine. But yeah, I just, you know, like I said, I, I wouldn't say that it was, uh, Mr. Snyder did send an email saying that a preliminary plat would need to be submitted first. Uh, but he was doing that based off an ordinance that he was reading in the town of Stokesdale's development ordinance, a section, section five dash seven. So I, I don't think that Mr., yeah, just like Mr. Greco said, Mr. Snyder's, um, decision was not just, just out of nowhere. He, he made this call or this recommendation, I would say, uh, based on an ordinance that he was reading from, from the book.
We made, they didn't make a note on that too, because that's one of those things that we need to fix. We're, we're in the middle of fixing all this stuff. You know, we got a lot of it, you know that. Uh, you know, we're paying a company to look at a lot of this stuff and get one C C D compliant. So it's just one, another, another item we need to make sure we get.
I, I have no problem with an added boy to Justin Snyder for being meticulous and careful with the, for the service he performs for the town of Stokesdale here.
Oh, yeah, he, he, he's absolutely doing his job, and that, and I'm appreciative. But understanding that you're gonna submit the preliminary plat on Monday and then come in here and some, submit the water plans, I mean, that's simultaneous to me.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, the motion is to, uh, in this case, allow Section five point two, coordination with other procedures, uh, prevail over, uh, the Section five point seven. I'll call question. Jim?
Aye.
Am I? Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And Mike?
And I am aye.
Just one, one quick, um, housekeeping item on that. Is someone gonna reach out to Justin and, I mean, do, do they need to reach out to Justin from the town and let him know that?
He's on soon.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Wagner will inform him.
Yes, I'll be sure to inform him. He's listening now, but I'll be sure to inform him.
All right.
Thank you all.
Yes.
Next up, discussion of town council's preferences regarding decision and appeal protocol as outlined in the town of Stokesdale Development Ordinance. Chuck, I believe this is, you wanted to have further discussion on this?
Yeah, so, uh, at our May meeting, we had a discussion about the table, I guess, of appeals and so, back up a second. In July is when, uh, Robbie, remind me that people are gonna be doing the review of the ordinance?
Uh, the ordinance is gonna be reviewed by the Piedmont Triad Regional Council.
Right, and so, and so in, in looking at that, the question of who hears appeals, who makes final decisions, who makes recommendations? Uh, we discussed that at some length in the May meeting. And, um, there was some confusion because the, again, the ordinance was internally inconsistent about those things. And so the question is, is do you want to keep? My read of the board's preferences at the last meeting was they were not inclined to move, um, decision-making away from either the planning board or, or the council to administrative, um, staff, which would largely be in Guilford County. So, um, so if that's the case, I just, it'd be nice to have some direction from the council about that before these other folks start. about that before these other folks start working on their ordinance again in July.
Okay.
If that makes sense. So, so I don't know necessarily the motion, but I just, I guess it's affirmed that my interpretation of what the board did in May was we want to keep pretty much things the way they are as far as who makes decisions, who makes, where appeals come from and, and not move functions away from the planning board and the, and town council to administrative staff.
Mr. Winfrey, it's my understanding what we did, we hired the Piedmont Tribe Council of Government to review our ordinance to bring us in compliance with general statute one sixty D.
Right.
I know I made the motion, the directive to them is to, when they return the, the product, to have any, any required changes written in red, red text, and any suggested changes written in blue text and all of it incorporated in one document so the citizens, the staff and, and town council can, can look at it.
Right.
It, it, to, to my mind's eye is if we start cha- making changes to our ordinance right at this particular juncture in time outside of that process, that we may at least confuse this council member, if not other people.
Right.
And, and so we've just proven that sometimes a board, you know, can look at a common sense problem and, and reach a solution and, and not get our, our citizens, our, our applicants, our, our developers bogged down. You know, we, we, that, that, that is a perfect example of how sometimes common sense needs to override text in a, in a book, in an ordinance, because I've, I've been working with codes all my life of one sort or the other. Mr. Greco is absolutely correct. They, they do almost always contradict themselves somewhere along the way. I've never seen, I've never seen a code that I've utilized that did not. And, and I would like for these decisions to remain close to, to Stokesdale. There's no assurance that Guilford County will continue to provide those contract planning services to us, you know, going forward. And so that, that's, of course, my opinion as one council member, I'm willing to make a motion on the matter if you think it necessary.
Well, if, I'm just, I guess I want to get some direction from the board and if, if that's, if board is, is there's consensus about that, we don't necessarily need a motion. If there's consensus to keep it as it was and then highlight the, the way you suggested with what's required, what's suggested and?
So I would share my opinion on the matter and would agree with Tim. I, I think where I got hung up in the last meeting was just that, again, the ordinance contradicting itself. There was the written word, which we do, and then there's the table, which we don't do. So, you know, for your clarity, I'd like to continue doing what the written word is and then that illustration, it's, it's not correct. It doesn't match the written word.
Got it.
Jimmy, Jim, Mike, y'all have any thoughts on this?
I'm just waiting for the folks to get done with the.
It hasn't started yet.
It hasn't started yet.
Right, right. Well, they, they can't start until July first, but.
I'm just saying, that's all I'm waiting on.
Yeah, no.
We'll make all the changes we need to make.
Well, I just want to make it as efficient as possible, so I didn't want to have them going down the wrong way. So we'll, we'll proceed on that path then.
Well, it's, it's good to get clarification, you know, we, we've seen why.
Okay.
So, yeah, thank you. Next up on the agenda is consideration of twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget ordinance. Once again, like to thank staff and Kim. I think you guys did a great job throughout the budget workshops and through, really the last two, three months putting this together. You know, we didn't receive any negative comments from the public in that, so that I consider that a, a good thing. With that, I'm, I'm comfortable making a motion that we adopt the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget ordinance for both the general fund and water enterprise fund for the town of Stokesdale.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there is none, I will call question.
Well, excuse me. I'm, I'm sorry. I was just going to give everybody else a turn.
Oh, please go ahead, sir.
I have perused through this budget and I guess this is, six or seven times I've been through this process. I favor limited government for Stokesdale and I've always opposed to property tax. I'd like to see us place greater effort in pursuing our, the return of our sales tax distribution monies. I, I think it's, while it may be difficult, that it's possible. I have, there, there, there are things in this budget that if I had a line item veto, I, I would want to change. I don't have that veto. I finally concluded after asking myself that, that I'm fifty-one percent in favor of the budget and, and I intend to vote for the budget, but I'm guarded about it. I am conscious that every dollar we spend is taken away from somebody by force and I, I think we would do well to remember that. And I, and I do appreciate all the effort that council and staff has put into this budget. It does require quite a bit of our time every year, but I, I think our citizens are worth it.
Thank you, Tim. Does anybody else have any comments or anything to offer?
I would just, um, just like to add that I still object to the money going to the traffic officer at our town's budget and I'd, I'm like Tim, if it was a line item, I would not vote for it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing that there are none, I'll call question. Jim?
Mr. Ford, there, there is one, one thing here. In, in the past, there have been times it seems like we have voted for the water enterprise fund separate from the general fund budget. I, I'm okay with doing it all at once, but just making sure before we do it that, that we're not jumping ahead of ourselves and we should be doing it that way. Mr. Winfrey, Ms. Thacker, do you have any opinion here?
Well, I think if you're, if you consolidate it into one motion, I think, I think that's fine and anyone could have, can move to amend it or?
Yeah, I, I could just see times when, I, as one council member, I might want to vote for one and not the other or vice versa, you know, going forward perhaps, but I thought it worth mentioning.
Yeah, if we have that, if anybody here is not going to vote for one of them, we can always split.
Yeah, I wouldn't object to splitting them. If you feel more comfortable splitting them, I, I, it's, we can certainly do that.
Well, sometimes it confuses us. You know, we're, we're kind of running two businesses here and, and separating it kind of helps, I think, when our citizens look at this, they read about in the Northwest Observer or they're reading our minutes, that helps them kind of in their mind, keep it separated.
Okay. Then, then I would withdraw my motion and enter a new motion to adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five budget ordinance for the general fund for the town of Stokesdale.
As, as written.
As written. Thank you, Robbie.
Okay, that's fine now, but I will say we have one ordinance that overlays both funds. So we don't have an ordinance for the, yeah, we don't have an ordinance for the general fund and an ordinance for the water enterprise fund. We've encompassed both funds in one ordinance.
We've, we've advertised one ordinance.
Yes, sir.
And we've communicated to everybody concerned with it being one ordinance.
Correct.
Do you happen to know how we've done it in the past?
One ordinance.
Okay.
In my time here, or that I couldn't tell you for certain.
Yeah, it, it just occurs to me that if, if, if I ruled that, I would, I would kind of keep them separate. I appreciate.
Well, I only have one ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I think it's important to consider that we haven't advertised two ordinances. We've advertised one, Mr. Ford. I, I'm, you know, just trying to.
Yeah.
I would, um, I would just like to point out though, that if we separate, by separating them, let's say we separate them because they're, they're inherently tied together based on the, the, the share of the water enterprise.
Be inverse.
So, so if we, let's say we voted, let's say we separated and voted on the regular fund, but we, we did not vote on, we failed on the water, then we're going to have to go back and renegotiate both of them probably because somehow or another the, the share's going to, you know, conflict both sides. It's something to keep in mind.
That's true.
Yeah, true. I just always say we had, one thing we have an unlimited amount of is the number of motions we can make.
Yeah, we're going to make a lot of motions. Why don't we make the right one this time and let's get this done?
My, my understanding, the proper motion, because it was advertised under one budget ordinance, would be one motion encompassing the budget ordinance.
That's cleaner. I think you could do it either way, but if, but if you want to match the advertising, that's probably cleaner.
I'm happy to, to work as, where everybody feels most comfortable with that. I believe staff would, if I'm reading their body language correctly, would prefer just the motion on the budget ordinance, seeing that there are no concerns. Well, there's, let me take that back. Seeing that there's no one that has said they would not vote for the budget, obviously Mr. Riggsby and, and Mr. Jones have expressed concerns and, and they're well taken. I'd like to go ahead and put my first motion back on the table.
All right, so you're going to withdraw your, your, your.
Withdraw that one, put the first one back on there.
And start it back on. That's no problem. Understood? So you've made a new motion to adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget ordinance, that ordinance being number oh two oh two four dash oh two.
Thank you, Robbie.
I'll second.
All right.
Okay, I should have said something sooner. Sorry, guys.
No, no, you're good. If there's no further discussion, I'll call question. Jim?
Aye.
Am I? Jimmy?
Uh huh.
And Tim?
Aye.
Mayor Crawford?
I am aye.
All right. We have a budget for next year. Great work, Kim. Thank you.
Hope we make it.
All right, we move on to item number fourteen, budget amendment number three for the current fiscal year. Would like to turn it over to Ms. Thacker here.
Yeah, yes, number three. Okay. I have, um, I have four budget amendments in front of you and this is for, these budget amendments are for fiscal year twenty-four.
You mean we're not changing next years already?
No.
Ms. Thacker, for, if, I, I would like for, just for the record and for those that may not know, for you to explain what a budget amendment is.
That is where, as you just saw, we just adopted the budget for fiscal year twenty-five. And if there are ever any changes or we are over or under on any expenses, we do not have a balanced budget because by statute we are required to keep a balanced budget. So therefore, if there's any changes to that budget that council adopts at the beginning of the fiscal year, by statute, we are required to request budget amendments, ordinance, amendments for those items.
And we number those.
We sure do. We are on number three right now.
And I will say the, the, it's easy to confuse, but the budget ordinance amendment number and the ordinance number are, are separate from one another. So budget amendments numbers are done on a fiscal basis and ordinance numbers are done on a calendar basis. So we just so happen that they matched up this go around.
Okay.
But it, it could not happen in the future.
All right.
For future reference. Okay, the first one, which is budget ordinance amendment number three. This one is to amend the ARPA special revenue fund. This, I have spoken with our auditor, Cindy Randolph. She has advised that this needs to be done as far as we are, we are.
Revenue replacement.
Uh huh.
Revenue replacement.
Yes, thank you. The, for the revenue replacement. This one is to amend the ARPA fund itself. So, and what we are, what we're requesting to do is to transfer to the general fund the income from the ARPA reserve fund of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-two cent. And then we are moving those funds into the reserve funds of income of the general fund of the same amount, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred ninety-seven fifty-two cent. Again, this is just requesting to amend the fund itself, the first one.
And, and you have spoken not only with the auditor, but the, was it the league of municipalities?
It was, yes, it was.
And, and this is at both of their recommendations?
Correct.
Okay, we briefly touched on this last meeting.
We did.
I'll go ahead and put a motion on the table that we adopt budget ordinance amendment number three for the FY twenty-four budget.
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions for Kim? I will call question. Jim?
Aye.
Am I? Jimmy?
Uh huh.
Uh, Tim?
Aye.
Mayor Crawford?
And I am aye.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on, we are moving to budget ordinance amendment number four.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Thacker?
This is for the general fund itself. I am requesting for, now that we've approved, to move the funds into the income. I am now requesting to increase the general fund by the four hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-two cent. The income for Greensboro-Janestown profit share decreasing that amount by thirteen thousand. The income plan review inspection fee decreasing that by five thousand. The income of planning and zoning fees decreasing that by ten thousand. And then the expenses, I am requesting to increase expenses for the ARPA expense, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-two cent. Park elec- and park electrical repairs, cleaning and lighting by two thousand dollars. And then I am requesting for, to decrease the codebook development ordinance by thirty thousand and this would, with this budget, this would give us a balanced budget.
Okay, I understand the whats and the whys and just to clarify, there's, we're not taking any money from designated funds or anything this year?
No, sir.
Okay.
Just moving money, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion that we adopt budget ordinance amendment number four.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call question. Jim?
Aye.
I'm also aye. Jimmy?
Uh huh.
Tim?
Aye.
And Mayor Crawford?
I am also aye.
All right, the motion passes. We move on to budget amendment number five, also for the current fiscal year. Ms. Thacker?
Yes. Again, I'm going to just go quickly on this one. These are to amend the funds, the reserve funds themselves, not the actual budget that, for the water enterprise account. These are the funds. And I'm requesting to amend the Guilford County ARPA grant, special revenue fund, transfer to the water enterprise reserve income. The North Carolina House Bill eleven sixty-three, the Guilford County ARPA grant, I may have just said that twice. And then we are increasing, excuse me, let me start with that. We're decreasing the fund by six hundred thousand of the ARPA grant, the North Carolina House Bill eleven sixty-three by thirty-five thousand. Then I'm requesting to increase the income by six hundred thousand and the North Carolina House Bill eleven sixty-three income thirty-five thousand to move into the water enterprise account for number five.
Thank you, Kim. With that, I'll make a motion to adopt a ordinance, budget amendment ordinance, number five.
Second.
Any discussion? Question? Jim?
Aye.
I'm also aye. Jimmy?
Uh huh.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am also aye.
Moving on to budget ordinance amendment number six. Ms. Thacker?
Last one, guys. Okay, this is budget ordinance amendment number six. This is to amend the water enterprise revenue and expense. The income, taps and connection income increased by twenty thousand, the Guilford County ARPA grant income by six hundred thousand, the North Carolina House Bill eleven sixty-three income by thirty-five thousand. On to expenses. The expenses, I'm requesting to increase contract operations by twenty thousand, water purchase by thirty-five thousand, new capital projects by six hundred thousand.
Okay. I move to approve budget amendment number six.
I'll second.
Question? Any, excuse me, any discussion? Question?
Aye.
Am I? Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Mayor Crawford?
I am aye.
Okay, that moves, moving right along, we are, oh, there's still some left here. Eighteen, consideration to resolve outstanding water bill debts owed to the town of Stokesdale Water Enterprise Fund. Mr. Landreth? Consideration to resolve outstanding water bill debts owed to the town of Stokesdale Water Enterprise Fund, Mr. Landreth.
Yeah, listen, you know, I wanted to clean that up. Priscilla's done such a good job getting those water bills down to zero. And this has been sticking out a long time and, but, um, Chuck's got some things he wants to talk to us about that we probably need to do in closed session. And so what I'd like to do is continue this until next month, do a closed session, and then come out and resolve it at the end of the closed session, one way or the other. If that'd be okay, and Robbie, if you put that on, if that's okay with everybody.
It is, yes.
Put that on, put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Next month.
Alright.
That good, Chuck?
Yeah, that's fine.
That works.
Well, with that said, I would like to make one comment. In the past, we've been advised by legal, legal council as board members that we couldn't simply vote to forgive past due water bills.
That's why we're going in a.
Yeah, so, you know, Mr. Winfrey, I, I would, I would like for you to, whenever you prepare for this, to, to take that into consideration and, and be sure that, you know, we're proceeding in the right direction. Cause in the past, we have spent a lot of time trying to figure out a way to deal with some, some, some large amounts and some small amounts. It has varied, but it has been kinda difficult to find a solution for the town water enterprise fund that's practical because attorneys don't wanna, you, you know, they don't wanna take a case to go out and pursue, uh, a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Right.
So, if you would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's try to wrap it up next month, though.
Yep, let's do that. Item number nineteen, consideration of resolution ratifying and authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement pertaining to provision of animal shelter and animal control services by Guilford County to the town of Stokesdale, Mr. Rigsby.
I'm sorry, hold on. Was there a vote on that last?
I think it was direction to continue.
Okay, direction to continue, and everybody's okay, no, none opposed.
Well, J, J, yeah, that's Jimmy's prerogative to, he went ahead and said Robbie put it on the next agenda, so, yep.
Closed session for the end of the meeting, with that at the end of the closed session, when we come out of closed session, I wanna be able to come out and resolve it.
Okay.
One way or the other.
Afterwards.
I hope.
Alright, Mr. Rigsby, where are the animal shelter?
This is, um, I, I just put this on for the staff, but, uh, our agreement with the, um, county and for animal shelter has come up for renewal in our, as well as animal control, so I'm gonna let Mr. Robbie speak on that, the specifics.
Yeah, I'll be glad to. So, um, not too long ago, um, the director of the, uh, Animal Services for Guilford County, Jorge Ortega, came by and, and popped in for a visit and introduced himself, and, and, uh, in, in discussion with him, we realized that our current contract, or inter, sorry, agreement really, uh, with, uh, Guilford County Animal Services was set to expire at the end of this month. And so in, in talking with him, he said that they would get a new contract over to us, and, and they've done such. And so, um, the, comparing the two contracts, not much of a difference. I haven't done a side-by-side comparison, but, uh, both of them would allow for the town of Stokesdale to pay Guilford County, uh, Animal Services to, uh, have an animal shelter and control services. Now, some might say, why do you have to have an animal shelter? Well, Animal Control Services have to have a place to take the animals. So unless Stokesdale wants to have a shelter, we have to pay them for both. And, um, so that, that's why those two go hand in hand. Um, the main difference, I would say, is that last, uh, the last contract was roughly sixteen thousand and some dollars. This one's about nineteen thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. So there is a, a price increase, uh, over the last three years. Um, but luckily, that was accounted for in the budget. And, um, one thing that, that I will note is, is that they have requested that a resolution be considered by the town council as a part of this agreement. Uh, and to the best of my understanding, this resolution ratifies and authorizes the execution of this agreement. And basically gives Mayor Crawford the authority to sign this agreement after the vote of a town council.
I'm, go, I'm sorry, I was just gonna get it on the table to discuss, but.
I'll wait, go ahead.
Mr. Winfrey, have you reviewed this agreement?
Yes, a couple of points I guess I'd like to discuss, make sure that the board's familiar with. One of the things that the resolution does is, um, essentially adopts the county's Article Five, which deals with animal control. So you're essentially adopting that, um, provision of the county ordinance as your own, essentially. Cause I don't think our ordinance necessarily has anything with animal control that, that I recall.
Not that I'm aware of.
So, so you're adopting the, the county's ordinance. Um, and for all practical purposes, this is a two-year commitment. It says you can cancel with one year's notice, but that one year notice has to be one year before the end of the fiscal year. And so if you don't give, so if you, if you don't give notice cancellation by the end of this month, then essentially you're, you're buying into two years of services from Guilford County. So it's a two-year contract, um, that the county, that the town is, is, um, buying into, which I think this was the term before.
Does that mean we're keeping the price the same for two years, or can they increase the price?
I think you're, you're paying one point one percent of the county's budget for animal control. So, so if, if the county's budget for animal control goes up, uh, next calendar year, then our rates will go up accordingly.
Okay, Mr. Winfrey, I'm gonna put you on the spot here a little bit. That's what I was kinda wanting to talk about. Have you read all the, the active contracts that the town of Stokesdale has with Guilford County?
No, I've not.
Okay.
I did read this one.
I, I have that merit badge. It had to do with a previous contract the town had unrelated to animal control. But the aggravating part of it for me was that, you know, they tend to write current contracts and reference the previous five, six, seven contracts. And so the only, the, the problem became, the only way to really tell how we stood with a given contract was to go read all those contracts, which didn't really have a lot one to do with the other. And so it, one of the things that would cancel was into at that particular point in time was how much notice we had to give to cancel that particular contract. And so glad you brought that up. I, I wanna be sure that we're clear that we can give one year's notice to cancel this contract, and we don't get locked into some sort of perpetual contract. Uh, are, are we, we're not binding a future cancel, uh, to obligate them to continue this contract and not be able to cancel it. So you see what I'm saying?
Right, but, but.
I, I don't like to take actions that bind the hands of a future cancel.
Right, for, for all practical purposes, the town is, is gonna be committed to this through July of twenty, uh, sorry, June of twenty twenty-six.
Okay, but that's it, we'll, we'll.
And that, that's right, you're not committed after that, and.
So, so it will expire without board action at, at that day?
Then, and then you can, that's right, and, but, but the town is, is obligated by state statute to provide animal control services. No, so, so either you contract with somebody to do it, or you, you hire the staff to do it yourself.
Thank you for that.
Robbie can.
I'll do it.
I'll take care of the little dogs, y'all can do the big ones.
Oh, boy.
So, any further discussion?
Uh, we need a motion.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna interrupt any of their thoughts. Um, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept resolution two-zero-two-four-zero-three. Resolution ratifying and authorizing execution of an interlo, local agreement pertaining to the provision of animal shelter and animal control services by Guilford County to the town of Stokesdale.
I will make one correction, and, and this is just one of those things that happens. So this is actually gonna be resolution two-oh-two-four dash oh-two. That being said, the resolution from earlier in the meeting regarding the ABC store was number two. So that made this number three, but since that one didn't pass, this one will now become number three. It's still the same resolution.
Ah.
Yeah, same wording, but it's just gonna be number two. So you, when you put several resolutions on here, you take a gamble as to whether or not they'll pass in chronological order. So, but it is gonna be number two. So the, the number will change, but nothing else will change.
I'll second, Mr. Rigsby's motion.
As long as you're good with it.
Any further discussion?
The other thing I'd like to point out about the contract is, is you're entitled to a report, um.
Quarterly, oh, yeah.
From, from, um, and maybe that's been provided in the past, but you're entitled to quarterly reports from Guilford County Animal Control and how many calls there were in Stokesdale. Um, and you might wanna just have this presented like you do with law enforcement and the fire department. Maybe not every meeting, but once a quarter, you could have that report.
Oh, I bet they do.
Will you start getting it?
Yeah, yeah, I will, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and it's time to vote. Question? Jim?
Aye.
Am I? Jimmy?
Uh-huh.
Tim?
Aye.
And Mike?
And I am aye.
Alright, moving right along. Item number nineteen, excuse me, twenty, uh, consideration of interlocal, no?
Is that not the same?
There's a resolution, and then there's an interlocal agreement, two separate items. So the, the, the resolution was needed before the interlocal agreement because the resolution is referenced as an ex, uh, exhibit A of the agreement.
And the resolution adopts Article Five, too, of the.
Correct.
Of the county ordinance.
So do we just simply need to make a?
A new motion, accepting the interlocal agreement, if that's what you wish to do.
I'll make that motion, that we accept the interlocal agreement between town Stokesdale and county of Guilford for the provision of animal shelter and control services. Uh, Guilford County Contract Number nine-zero-zero-zero-six-three-three-nine.
And authorize the mayor to sign it.
And authorize the mayor to sign it on our behalf.
I'll second.
Alright.
Alright, what, i, if I may, Mr. Wagner?
Yes, sir.
Can you restate in layman's language why we're voting on the same item twice? One being a resolution, one being an interlocal agreement. Why do we have to do the resolution?
Well, they have requested, uh, you to consider the resolution. It's an exhibit of the interlocal agreement. So it would take two votes, one's a resolution, one's the agreement. And as Chuck said, the resolution is, is more so that you're adopting, was it chapter five or Article Five?
Article Five of the Guilford County's animal control ordinance.
So it's one of those things, oh, yes.
Do, do I have this resolution written out in my packet?
You do, you do.
And, and it has that verbiage concerning Article Five?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just looking at it.
Uh, it's on exhibit A, page one.
I think I just didn't flip the page over to get to it.
The last paragraph.
I took those to be one. Alright, thank you, Mr. Wagner.
No problem.
Okay, we have a motion. Uh, Mr. Rigsby, you have a motion. Mr. Landreth, I believe, seconded.
That is.
Alright, is there any further discussion? Call question? Jim?
Aye.
I'm also aye. Jimmy?
Uh-huh.
Tim?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
And I am also aye.
Okey-dokey. Item number twenty-one, consideration of proposal for internet and telephone services at Stokesdale Town Hall Building. Just some background, we, our contract with our current provider for internet and telephone has expired, so we're on a month-to-month basis. Uh, it has been my perception for a long time that the, uh, quality of service is, uh, you know, average and, uh, that we pay too much. So I'd like to thank Robbie for, and Mason also, uh, for doing a great job of, uh, I believe doing a great job of giving us a different proposal. Uh, and I would also like to turn it over to Robbie to share what he learned with us.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, as you know, the, the town of Stokesdale, we currently have a, we were out of contract with Spectrum, but we pay them monthly for, um, internet, telephone, and television. And, um, and, uh, that is eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-one cent per month. And so in an effort to reduce these expenses, I've reached out to AT&T. And, um, after speaking with, uh, with Julie from AT&T, she's explained it to me that, um, sorry. My computer is acting up over here. Uh, she's explained it to me that, uh, that basically, in order to get, uh, this dedicated fiber service to us, um, this is the, the options that they have. Um, that being that the, uh, telephone service is a, is a standard rate of one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cent per month. And then you have three options for internet, that being three hundred megabytes, five hundred megabytes, and a thousand megabytes. Uh, each one has the same, uh, installation cost of a hundred and forty dollars. But with higher internet speeds comes a higher monthly cost. Given that our current internet speed is twenty-five megabytes per second, I would say that three hundred megabytes, which is the lowest option provided by AT&T, is more than sufficient. Um, so, uh, what really, uh, the determining factor here is, is how long of a contract does, does the town council wish to, to start with AT&T? Um, you know, if you wanna do a one-year contract, determine how the service is, this is uncharted because we've never had AT&T here. I know that it's certainly in the neighborhood, but in my time here, we've always had Spectrum. And so, um, you know, it's, do you wanna go with it for a year and try it? Uh, do you wanna go with it two years and, and hope that it goes well for two years? So that's the, that's the question.
What's the difference here?
One is AT&T and the other is Spectrum.
No, I mean the price, the one year, the two year?
So there is, uh, so the good news is, the two-year term is a little, you know, you get a better rate the, the longer of a term that you sign up for. So that is an option. And a higher speed, it's right, you do get a higher speed as well, so. Yeah, and I, and I will say that, uh, this, this Erie Spring is a subsidiary of AT&T. And so, um, once they get in here and they get the, the cable, dedicated fiber cable from Highway one fifty-eight into the building, uh, then after being with them, we're able to hook on with AT&T specifically.
We can't use the existing infrastructure somehow from the road into this building?
I've asked that. Apparently that belongs to Spectrum.
Not, how could?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's, I have, I have AT&T, and that's exactly what happened.
Okay. Wasn't able to hook into the same line, or you were?
No, they, they, uh, they, they put in a new.
New line.
New modems, the whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, the equipment is, is, uh, is quite a bit different. But I'll be honest, in my opinion, there's not a dime's worth of difference in the two.
Really?
Other than the price.
Gotcha. Well, there you go, then. I would say the cheapest option would be, uh, the favorable one.
Yeah, I mean, we, you, you have, you have service that stops. You, you have an interruption in their, in your internet. It just happens. It happens with both of them.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Did anybody visit this building and enlighten you as to how they might get a cable from the road into our mechanical room?
No, they did not. I, I attempted to get someone to come out here, and, and just getting a quote was hard enough. I think I shared my frustrations with Mr. Foy. Took several phone calls and several emails on weekends to get these people to agree to give me a proposal.
Well, it's gotta, it's, it's gotta be across the road. It's either that or it's on our side of the road, uh, because it goes to my house.
Understood, a, and, and that's correct. It is running down Angel Pardue Road. My understanding is, the benefit of a, a building such as this, what they usually, although we're not a commercial entity, they consider this a commercial property for billing purposes. They like to give them dedicated fiber lines. Now, we could tap into the line that's going down Angel Pardue Road, but that same line is being used by everyone else down Angel Pardue. That being Angels Glen, uh, soon to come, the new subdivision. And so by doing this, we get a dedicated fiber line that would run from one fifty-eight to us. And anybody, what they're getting at is, you may lose internet at Angels Glen, but the town of Stokesdale will still have internet if it goes out on your end and not this end.
I, I, I'm just concerned about how this may be done. I've dealt with these people quite a number of times, and I have been, I have repaired damage from the, these kind of installations many, many times, and.
Understood.
What they're gonna do, they're gonna run a line on the ground out there, and they're gonna find a place to come up on the wall.
What they're gonna dig into the concrete, what they're gonna get, I mean, really, we need to know, cause.
Understood.
Don't wanna. Stuck into the brick.
Well, the. I'd have to go look, they should.
Jimmy's point, chances are that, that the cable, the connection's gonna run up the wall, but it's, it's a very small intrusion into the wall. Most everything you got's inside. That's where.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Your modem, your, all that other good stuff is that makes it work.
Mr. Mayor, I have some experience in these matters, if I may.
Well, I think everybody's got some experience with cable.
You had some experience with this?
We have those, so go ahead.
Well, I have once upon a time passed a exam for North Carolina electrician.
Gee, you need to put it in for us.
What I, what I was gonna suggest, that we attempt to utilize the same conduit that, uh, Spectrum is in and remove their cable and have them reinstall there, and they can get pretty sloppy, uh, drilling through walls and, and damaging other infrastructure. You, you know, uh, I, I could tell a number of horror stories, so that's why I was hoping that a rep could meet with Mr. Wagner and, and lay out a route and address any con, obvious conflicts, you know. For, for example, there's a sprinkler system installed in front of this building. There's all kinds of things they can hit.
Understood.
And, uh, I have, it just has never been, uh, easy coordinating, uh, in my opinion, uh, it's a whole lot easier to coordinate with Duke Energy, for example, with these kind of installations than it is. Uh, one of the internet service providers, I've been through this many times, so, uh, I, I just don't wanna hear that they've cut this or cut that, or, or damaged this or damaged that. So I, I would, I'll leave it in your capable hands, but, but I would stress to them that you'd like to do a walkthrough before the installation crew shows up.
Understood.
Tell them whatever you. Tell them whatever you like as to the reason, but we, you know, we don't need any problems associated with the installation.
Understood, yeah, I, like I said, I would have loved to have gotten somebody out here, it makes it easier to get a quote when they're here looking at it. They have a feel of the length from the road to the building, I know they can do it remotely now, and that's what they choose to do, but I would, I would have preferred someone to come out here, but.
Remind me, you and I do some looking in the mechanical room and see what's there.
And what's there, and as you've noted before, and I've made AT&amp;T aware of this, not only do we need fiber in here, we have a fiber line that runs from the town hall to the concession stand, that runs a wireless router down there as well, so I've made them aware of it.
Surely we're not discussing tampering with that, are we?
If the line is the same, we should be good, as in, I don't think that that's a dedicated cable, dedicated fiber line running down there. I think it's just simply a connectivity line from the building to there.
That's what I believe.
Yes, I think we're good.
If, that line also crosses a very large septic field. How about letting me know, you know, what you find out, and I'll try to help.
I'll call you and Eight One One at the same time.
All right.
I'm not trying to volunteer to him, but he does know, I'm just picking away a minute ago, but it'd be good for him to be on site.
Yeah, that's fine.
If he can, I know he's busy.
Yeah, if I can get them to give me a date, I'll be sure to share with you.
FaceTime or something.
Yeah, understood.
So he can ask some questions or something else.
Yeah.
I've done one line, he's probably done a thousand, so.
No problem at all.
If that's okay with you.
But if you were asking, and I know Mr. Foye and I were talking about this earlier, for a recommendation from staff, personally, I would recommend the one-year plan for the three hundred megabytes. And I know that the two-year plan for the five hundred seems appealing, but I do think there's a good reason to give it a year, to give it to try. And then on top of that, after a year, you're with AT&amp;T directly.
What's our savings?
Savings is twenty-eight percent, sorry.
Yeah, savings is twenty-eight percent if we do the one-year.
I'm sorry, just changing, we would spend twenty-eight percent less.
Between Spectrum and AT&amp;T.
Our internet service would also be twelve times stronger than what it is today.
Correct.
For what it's worth, I prefer one year, I just, you know, we've had difficulty in the past with this kind of service locked in the contracts and.
Gift cards.
Yeah, is anybody getting a gift card on this?
I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the proposal from Mayor Spring, quote, One One Two Four Six Nine Two Six Eight Eight, dated Six Two Twenty-Four, to provide phone and internet service with a speed of three hundred megabytes per second for a one-year term and the total amount of five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and nineteen cents per month. That comes out to six thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents per year, plus a hundred and forty dollar installation fee.
That's a very nice motion, Mr. Foye, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Jim?
Aye.
I'm also aye, Jimmy?
Aye.
And Tim?
Aye.
Mayor Crawford?
I'm also aye.
Wonderful, all right, the last two items on the agenda are continuing education for the staff, so, Mr. Wagner?
Yes, okay, I'd be glad to, so, let me move on past this. All right, so as you'll see in your packets, I've put a memo together here, and basically the purpose of this is to seek approval for the attendance of these various conferences to obtain and maintain my certified municipal clerks designation, and basically, maintain my CMC through the NCAMC, that being the North Carolina Association of Municipal Clerks, and the IIMC, the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, you have to have so many continuing education hours. The most common and typical attendance to keep these hours are to attend their four staple conferences, that being the Summer Conference, the Fall Regional, the Fall Master Clerks Academy, and the Spring Regional Conference. Last year, I attended all four of these, I also attended the New Clerks Certification Course, so the UNC School of Government, passed that successfully, don't have to go back to that. That's a, that's a, you know, a cost savings in itself, and, and the beauty of that is, that gets you, that gets you the information. These conferences are what gets you the follow-up information, at these conferences, they reiterate some of the stuff that we've talked about in class, and then on top of that, they give you updates. They give you updates in statutes, they give you updates in where the state budget is, all kinds of stuff like that, and so. And on top of that, they give you continuing education credit hours. And so typically in the past, I have put these things forward, and mostly out of, I would say inexperience, first year being a clerk back then, put these forward one class at a time, and would put them forward as the registration was about to open. The classes are pretty much, I'm gonna say roughly the same rate every go-around, they might raise the registration fees up and down every now and then, the locations change. But I have a pretty good idea of where all the classes are gonna be this year. I don't know where the regional classes will be, but they're usually within twenty-five miles, that's what makes them the region, the Piedmont Region. And so, so with that being said, I would just request permission to attend all of the above mentioned. And those conferences being the Summer Conference, Fall Regional, Fall Masters, and the Spring Regional. And although I've done a cost breakdown of each conference, they come out together to about three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. And considering that the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget that you all just passed allocates seven thousand towards fees and education, a budget amendment would not be necessary for me to attend these classes.
Okay. Robbie, I don't think I have any questions, just as, you know, in past, in years past, when you've been with the UNC School of Government, I just ask that you please send pictures and document that, you know, there was a professor in the.
It's funny you should say that.
Tutor?
That's right, so one year ago today, I'll just share this real briefly, one year ago today, there's an app called Snapchat, and I had taken a Snapchat. And we were in, sitting at the School of Government one year ago today, getting instructions by Christina Wilson, who's a legal professor there. And in the midst of our discussion, the fire alarm went off, and rather than evacuating the building, we just sat there and kept sitting through the instructions. So I wish I could find the video of that, that was hilarious, but that was one year ago today.
Just as long as, you understand why I've asked that request. Well, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize or approve the three thousand four hundred dollar, four hundred and eighty dollar expenditure for Robbie to attend the continuing education programs as proposed.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Wagner, question. You state that required to complete a specific number of continuing education hours annually, but it doesn't state those hours, do you know that number?
I don't, I knew that question was coming, I'm careful with my wording in these memos, I'm trying to get a exact number from them. I have reached out to the IMC and the CMC, and both of them say, well, if you attend these four conferences, you're fine. But I am trying to get the exact numbers on that, I think Ms. Martin knows, but she wasn't here yesterday when I typed up the memo.
My hesitation has nothing to do with Mr. Wagner, it just has to do with our small budget, small staffs, small town, you know, et cetera. You know, we, as Mr. Landreth referred to it, bought you books and sent you to school. And I didn't realize there was gonna be an ongoing cost to that, in the thousands and thousands of dollars at the time. Although it doesn't surprise me, you know, there's, everything is expensive. So I just wondered how many hours we were maintaining, and I would ask you if there's any other way to get those educational hours other than your physical presence there.
They do have virtual trainings, they don't have them quite as often as the, these in-person trainings. And the virtual trainings are usually less hours, because they don't take up a number of days, they're usually in a day, and so the hours are less. The hours you attend versus the credit hours you receive for attending are a different number. There are virtual trainings, I'll just say, as somebody that's attended both, you certainly don't gain near as much from looking at a computer screen that you do as attending a conference and being able to ask questions, but that's just.
Yeah, I myself just took a class not too long ago, and I'd elected to do it in person versus over, over a computer for those reasons, so, yeah, I got it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Okay, Mr. Wagner? One more question, in order to, my mindset is that, you know, the town's sending you to do this for the town's benefit, and also for your benefit, continuing career development, all those sorts of things. And I've mentioned this before, when you come back from these things and materials are presented and provided to you, I would like for those to be scanned and left with the town, should you leave. For example, if there's some particular problem that a future staff member is trying to solve, and they have those materials available, maybe that would be a benefit to the Town of Stokesdale, and, you know, the citizens would receive that benefit because of that, do you object to that idea that we, that, you know, there's?
I'm right there with you, if you go in my office, I have a white binder for every class I've ever attended since I've been employed by the Town of Stokesdale. And I've got them labeled in order of attendance chronologically, and where the class was and what it was, and every document that I was given at said class, along with the payment information.
Yeah, would council agree conceptionally that we need to kind of take advantage of the opportunity to be sure we retain copies of these materials to use as reference materials for the rest of the staff and maybe cancel? Is this a good idea?
I refer to them all the time, that's why I have them in chronological order, and that's why I have them in a physical binder. We get advice from attorneys for the School of Government, we get all sorts of updates on general statutes, and there's really no way, there's no one place to go to find that other than these binders, in my opinion. You go to these binders, and it's a conceptual update of everything that happened, on top of notes, and at the end of the day, you can get something in a book that tells you how to do something, but if you have a room full of five hundred municipal clerks, they'll tell you the real way to get it done. And I take those notes very, to heart, and make sure to note that in my binder, so, but every one of those are in my office.
Is there any, is there any way for us to make this proprietary material?
What's that? I mean, what's your question?
Is there any way to make it proprietary material, that is, it's owned by the town?
Yeah, absolutely, you're more than welcome to take ownership of it, that's fine, that's fine, I will, scanning is free, and a digital copy could be sent to me, that's no worries. I will say, by being owned by the town, it is a public record, so anybody that requests it would be able to receive it at that request, but there's nothing wrong with that.
It's not my intent to divide here, it's my intent to multiply towns, too.
Understood, and I will say, keep in mind, every year, information is updated, so last year's books won't be near as relevant as this year's books.
Sure, you know, back in the day, when I was new on council, somewhere around here, there used to be a binder floating around from the Municipal Clerks Association that covered do's and don'ts for town clerks, I found that to be very useful over a period of time, for example.
The Moore Handbook, I think is what you're referring to, it's on the website.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so anyway, that's what, I, for one, would like to be sure that that's what happens if we're investing in this knowledge, that that knowledge remains in the building, should you leave.
It's in my head, it can stay in the book.
Should you meet a charming young lady and move to another locale, or whatever the case may be?
Watch your mouth out.
Gotta clone you.
No, but I think continuing education, I think, you know, it certainly benefits Robbie's career development, it also benefits the town, I think, you know, things you learn, such as, and I think, I believe, my understanding is, you discovered, you know, in terms of our trash service with GFL, you know, we weren't getting, you know, four thousand dollars or so from the state, and I believe you worked, you know, with your learnings from that, you worked with that. So we do have that small annual revenue stream, not only this year, but going forward, something that the town had not gone, you know, had gotten before, so. You know, that's just one example of the benefit that this can be for the town, and I tied it to real money.
Okay, well, I'm just.
There's your money back, there.
I'm voting with it for this with the understanding that the town also benefits by retaining those, a copy of those materials.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, copies are made already, and you're more than welcome to them, and I can make as many copies as we need to, they're just in white binders.
So we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Jim?
Aye.
I'm aye, Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am aye.
All right, moving right along for program for Ms. Thacker, awesome training, Robbie, or Ms. Thacker, could you please?
Yeah, I'd be glad to speak on that again, so I'll, I had a conversation with Ms. Thacker, we've had these conversations several times, but this was the first time that we were able to find a conference that was coming up, and was able to really conceptualize putting our thoughts into this conference. And so, like we've mentioned before, continuing education is good for any employee, anywhere, especially in local government, things change. Finance, I can't even imagine how often things update, and so a great opportunity for Ms. Thacker is to attend any local municipal finance officer training, and it just so happens there's one coming up in July, and so the North Carolina Government Finance Officers Association is having their Twenty-Four Summer Conference. And speaking numbers first, the approximate cost is one thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. And combined with the cost of the attendance for my clerks' conferences that you've just approved, that comes out to five thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that's still less than the seven thousand that's been allocated, so a budget amendment would not be needed for this. But I just feel that her being able to go to this would provide professional development that she could provide for the town and its residents. I just, there's, there's no way to encapsulate in words how important these trainings are, I mean, they're, not only, not only are you coming back with a book of knowledge, you're gaining it there, but more so than anything, she'll get phone numbers of finance officers throughout the state, that's probably one of the best things that I've gotten from this. You connect with people, you find, in my case, municipal clerks throughout the state, in her case, finance officers throughout the state, and you can ask them questions. And it's a whole lot, it's a whole lot easier to sometimes ask them a question, and a whole lot more call savvy, because it doesn't cost anything. And I just think it's great, and going to these conferences and building relationships with these folks are great. I probably have well over a hundred municipal clerks in my contacts that I text at any time to ask questions. And so I think that Ms. Thacker going to one of these, just one conference would give her just as much, you know, benefit. So I could talk all day about how good these conferences are.
All right, well, I'll make a motion instead. I'll make a motion to approve Ms. Thacker to attend the North Carolina Government Finance Officers, Finance Officers Association Summer Conference for the amount of one thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars.
I'll second the motion, and I might, I might add, council, I have found this organization to be helpful in the past with some questions I have asked them directly.
Wonderful. Well, good.
Now, we're gonna spend all this money on y'all, y'all don't give a quitin' on us.
Are you gonna bring your book back?
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Question, Jim?
Aye.
I'm aye, Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am aye.
All right, I believe, is that it? Wonderful. That is it, that brings us to item number twenty-four, public comments from the floor. Would anybody like to speak? I'd like to recognize Mr. Logan, who not only raised one hand, but two hands. Welcome, Michael.
How are y'all doing this evening?
Good.
Well, y'all are working hard, I'd like to invite you out to y'all's facilities next weekend, we're gonna do a barbecue out there, come out there and get some barbecue, get something neat. Couple of questions on the alcohol, there are two statutes, one is Eighteen B Eight Oh One, and that deals with the location, opening, and closing of the stores. It pretty much puts up most of the power in the board that is doing the alcohol. But, somebody back in two thousand and nine passed a session law, and the session law is worded where? A local board chooses location of the ABC Board, stores within its jurisdiction, subject to the approval of the commission in making the decision on the location. Commission may consider whether citizens of the community, or the city in which proposal is to be located, voted for, or against ABC stores in the past last election. Now, it also says, in Guilford County, thousand feet within a school, childcare, or any of those facilities. So they still have a choice of where they want to put it, if you do allow it. Now, once you allow them to be able to do it, they're pretty much, it's in their ball court, but it cannot be within a thousand feet of a school. But it cannot be within a thousand feet of a school or child.
Is a SUNY school and a church counted as a school?
Yes. Actually, it's actually worded as, da-da-da-da-da. Says whether the proposed ABC store is located within a thousand feet of a church, public school, or any non-public school under part one or part two of article thirty-nine of chapter one fifteen C of the general statutes. And that is session law two thousand and nine two ninety-five. And that applies just to Guilford County. But if you go look at the general statute, it's not in there, but if you go to the session law, you can find it in there.
Are you reading off of a hard copy that you could let Mr. Wagner copy for all of us?
If you go to the NC leg on legislature website and put in session law two thousand and nine two ninety-five, it should come up.
Two thousand nine ninety-five?
Two ninety-five.
We'd be under Guilford County ordinance?
But yes, there is. It's very similar to the school board situation. Legislature made a law that applied to Guilford County. And so, in this case, this law applies only to Guilford County. If you go outside of Guilford County, I believe that basically, if you go under their standards, it can actually be within fifty feet of a church.
Okay, so it's like a local bill?
It's a local bill.
Is that Guilford County, is that, excuse me, include the municipalities?
Municipalities, you have to allow them to come in and do it. But yes, that would include municipalities.
I'm talking about the Guilford County ordinance?
Yes.
This is a legislative action that applies to Guilford County. It's not a Guilford County action, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, this is session law.
The whole county, Greensboro, everybody?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Now, it would, if there was ABC store that was before two thousand and nine, it wouldn't apply to yet. But anything after this law passed, it should apply to. Mr. Winfrey could probably give you a little more information. I imagine he's looking it up now.
Yes. Two ninety-five?
I just printed you.
Uh, yeah, two thousand and nine two ninety-five.
It actually references, that is added to eighteen B eight oh one. So, that's gonna be the actual statute that the session law merged.
Yeah, if you look at the eighteen B eight oh one, it doesn't say anything about that. But there is, you keep Googling away, you eventually find something. So, but I thought it was within a thousand feet of schools.
Yeah. Impressive, Michael. Thank you.
And I was very surprised, gentleman that was speaking, I missed the whole presentation, but he said he did not know how close it could be to schools.
Well, I think there was some, let's just say, there was some confusion and things all around, and we're getting that clarified.
All right, we'll come out and eat some barbecue next weekend.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. Would anybody else like to speak? All right, that moves us to council comments. Mr. Rigsby.
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. Appreciate the robust discussion on the ABC bill. And hope everybody have a good fourth and stay cool. It's gonna be hot this week.
What? Is that it, bud? Is that it? Okay. As we wrap up this fiscal year, looking back, I think it's, you know, it's been a great year for the town. I just want to say how truly appreciative and express my gratitude towards our town staff. I have so, I have so much admiration for all of your commitment to the business of the town and the citizens, your interaction with the citizens when you're discussing the business of the town. It's just admirable, and I'm truly grateful. I want to recognize you all by name. Robbie Wagner, Kim Thacker, Priscilla Hunzucker, Mason Winfrey, Mrs. Dale Martin, and Gary Matheus. Just thank you all. I'm just truly appreciative. I also would like to recognize, I'm not sure if a lot of people know yet, but we've got an awesome thing going on right now at our park, you know, with Andrew Niesel and his Eagle Scout project, and the army of people that are working with him to accomplish that goal. We're gonna have, we're gonna have a nice trail at our park, not only on the new property we bought a couple of years back, but also on the wooded property, on the wooded part of the rear of our property that goes down to that creek. And I'm just really excited about it, and just truly thankful to all of those people. And look forward to recognizing them at a later date, hopefully in here, at the completion of that project. Would also like to recognize the North Carolina State Baseball Team, and they made the College World Series this year. It's been a good year for the Wolf Pack, so I'm grateful for that as well. Like to welcome, like to wish my colleagues on the board, all of you, a happy Father's Day. It's coming up Sunday, so, all of you, happy Father's Day, and happy Father's Day to you, gentlemen, as well. And lastly, just Mike, Mayor Crawford, it's great to see you. You showed so much resiliency, strength, and courage, stubbornness, everything, especially these, I know it's been a tough go, buddy, but it is, my goodness, it's great to see you back in the fold. And I'm just, it's an honor to serve with you, sir. That's it. Jimmy?
I was gonna say the same thing about some of those folks you said, Mike, it is good to see you back. It really is. And I want you to keep on kicking so we can finish the things we started. And it's just great to have you back. Tough guy. And, you know, I know we had a pretty tough discussion tonight, but me and Jim are still buddies. And we have disagreements sometimes, and, you know, we'll work them out. It'll, wherever the chips fall, that's where they'll fall. And then, we'll go on to the next item. But I don't want anything, anybody to think that, you know, 'cause we're getting a little loud sometimes, that we got any problems. I don't. Anyway, I can speak for myself. Sometimes you just do that, so.
Absolutely. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Foy. It's hard to follow all that, but, number one, I'd like to give thanks to the healthcare providers that have taken care of Ms., or, excuse me, Mayor Crawford while he's been sick. And I'm very glad to have him back. And on a personal note, I need your help keeping this bunch in line sometimes, so I'm begging. The Fourth of July is coming up, and I'd like to take a moment to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, and not forget those that wrote our Declaration of Independence, wrote our constitution, all those that have gone before us that made the country, find the country live in possible. Just not too much, I mean, there's so much that can be said there, but I hope that our children will always remember the Fourth of July and what it means. And then, lastly, for those that want to be in prayer about our ABC store, our quality of life is basically what we have and what we need to protect. And I just, it came to mind before this meeting that I would ask those that might support me to read Psalm thirty-seven, twelve through thirty. Psalm thirty-seven, twelve through thirty. And with that, I'll thank everybody and wish them a good night.
I want to thank everyone for your well wishes and keeping me in your prayers. It is my hope and desire that I am back and that I can make a contribution to this town and town council. With that said.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Just a couple of quick announcements. Ma'am, okay. The next town planning board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, June twenty-seventh, seven PM, inside the Stokesdale Town Hall chambers. The Stokesdale Town Hall building will be closed on Thursday, July fourth, in observance of Independence Day holiday. The next town council meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July eleventh, at seven PM, inside the Stokesdale Town Council chambers. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Begging.
Jim? I'm I, Jimmy? Tim?
I.
And I'm also I.
Okay, thank you, folks. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, guys. Hey, Chuck, I don't think that passed. I don't think what he's talking.